Ah, here we are.
You could join us. Just unmute it.
Oh. Yeah, okay.
Still got bad echo. Is that for me?
Yeah, yours. I just turned mine all the way down.
I turned my computer audio all the way off.
If I have to talk, you gotta put the audio.
No, that's gonna pick it up.
That can.
Really? So I can make mine.
Ted, could you just say something quick?
What'd you say?
Hi, Cam.
He's kinda late.
All right, thanks.
About time.
If you turn your computer audio off.
Turn it really?
Okay, good. I turned mine all the way off.
I put it all the way down and it still tiny bit. I don't know why. No, I think you have got a bionic speaker on right now. How do I do that?
Okay, so we have new audio for tonight's meeting. We have a conference phone here at the village, so everyone's gonna come through one line. Everyone's audio's gonna come through one line tonight. So hopefully it'll cut down on some of the feedback and the echoing that we've had. But if there's any issues, just let us know. And Ted, and I know you're remote too, if you can, you can let us know if we're having any audio issues. And with that, I think we're, we're good.
Ready to start the meeting? Okay.
Moving into the flag, states of America, republic, and one nation, together, indivisible. Your tea and justice for us.
All right. Now, I'm hoping that my great won't put in and out now that we have a new system for mayors and electeds. I have a lot. We have a lot going on that I finally can, uh, can tell you about. On the fourth, I had a great Zoom meeting with Gay, Gay Kavanaugh and the Endicott Rotary Club. They had some questions about our new company coming here. They had lots of good questions and comments, and I really appreciate their support. The very best part is they have two top projects, both of them here in the village. One is a possible original world answer organ music for our carousel at the north side park. The other is to refurbish our ice rink and Griffin Park. There, this would be great for our local hockey teams who have another place for practice as well as figure skate lessons. The hockey players said they like to play with the outdoor ice because it's harder and better to skate on, so this would be nice for us to have. I realize it's Brum County, but we still count it as Endicott. We're working with the land bank to finally tear down 108 Roosevelt Avenue. As I was on, the code department and the code from, uh, Endicott probably been working on this for two years. And so it looks like we're finally gonna be able to get it down. It was owned by Brum County, then it got sold, then it got bad. That's, that's, I'm hearing it going crazy. There we go.
No, it's not.
So, so that we're getting it done. Of course, yeah.
I don't know what I did.
There we go.
No, no, no.
Now, if they had some good music.
I don't know what hap- I.
They all set?
I can't get it down.
In the Union District, as everybody knows, your sons is coming. Jim McCoy is expanding the former Lancy. And we should be able to finally order our, our charging stations to put in the municipal lot next to the corner drugstore. Our municipal electric is going to take care of these because they are an entity that can make money and they often know how to repair them. Since they're on the corner, uh, the lot is on the corner of Seventeen C and Twenty-Six North. It should work out real well. And people who are getting their vehicles charged can start to patronize our restaurants and our stores on the Union District and hopefully will start building that up. The avenue is coming alive and, and, uh, when we have committee reports, I mean, he's going to probably tell us a whole bunch about the avenue. The DMV is now open. Mr. Creed wants to have a concert to benefit some of the charities that they give to when they have the dicks open. Uh, he wanted to use the airport, but on such a short notice, he could not get everything squared away with the FAA. But he may use Griffin Park or Kmart Plaza. Magic City Ice wants to have concerts, and the first one they want to have is the Beach Boys. And of course, my era loved that. The FAA will not allow the large crowd at the airport, however, so he may have to talk to them at the Endicott Plaza too. The man who owns it is, uh, hopefully going to let him do that. He expects a thousand people, so I don't know if that's gonna happen. I had a wonderful conversation with Congressman Brandezi last week. He had, we had some miscommunication that came to our attention, but he took the time out to call me. I was so impressed that a Washington congressman called me. Um, the best part is he's now interested in helping the village to get back on her economic seat. So we have, uh, another good, another good person to help us. The last thing is there's been a lot of problems regarding garbage rules. We had a lot of mix-up and we really needed to address this. And then there's some other people who got on there, made all kinds of statements that, that were very inaccurate. So we're finally getting it straightened out. Our codes in general have not been enforced in the village for many years, and this has caused so much confusion. So explanation is going to be on the village website tonight. It takes time to fix out these problems, but we're creating plans and we hope to get things to go a lot smoother than. There's also a water board meeting on the eighteenth. My secretary has been taking down all the numbers and the addresses that you've been sending in, and we're going to address it with the water board and with the water department. And we're gonna start working on some plans. We cannot sit and wait for these filters. We gotta get it taken care of now. So that's, uh, that's the end of that. So thank you so much. Now we go on to the approval of minutes.
I had a question on a couple of those, Linda.
On a couple of my announcements?
Yeah. Um, the electric charger machine, what, what lot is that gonna be in?
The, is the one by corner drugstore. It's our municipal lot.
Behind corner drug?
Union District, in Union District.
It's the one behind corner drug?
Yes.
Okay, then, as far, you said you talked to Brandezi. How did he, did he give you some ideas of how he wanted to help us economically?
Yes, you see, Brandezi has the same money, and I'm glad you brought this up. He has the same money that Schumer does for the, um, for the water infrastructure. And it's gonna take eight million dollars and we won't get it all from, from Schumer. We can't afford it, so he's going to help us on that cost too. That's another thing we will discuss at the water board on Thursday. It's how close are they to giving me something that I can take to them and ask for the money?
Was there other things, was there, was there other things he mentioned to?
And I will.
Was there other things that he mentioned on that call?
Um, not that he's going to do for us, no. I told him I would call him when I had more stuff that I wanted done. All right, now may I have a motion to pass the approval minutes, please?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of six, one twenty.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, so pass. All right. Now, um, we want to have another.
Do one of these individually?
Pardon me? We want to have, um, a number of public hearings, so we have, we will have to do these individually, yes. Uh, so would you like to, uh, Deputy Mayor, would you like to start that, please?
Um, I'd like to call for a public hearing on July twentieth as follows. The first one is closure of park of two streets, Park Street from Main Street to Madison Ave. Vehicles are not yielding to the right of way for emergency vehicles and fire trucks.
When is the, uh, what was it, what was the date, Cheryl?
July twentieth.
At seven PM?
At seven PM.
Yes, at seven PM.
What's the closure for?
Um, this, this, well, we can talk more about it in public hearing, but this is because the, the trucks and the vehicles are not stopping for our fire truck. You have lights going, you have the sirens going, and people are riding, driving right in front of them. So the fire department asked if we could close that one tiny section between, between East Main Street and, and Madison. So people will have to come down to the, to Madison to come over. And that's what they requested. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
We got Ted.
No, I'm in favor.
Okay, let's go with number B.
B is recommend, uh, recommending placing a dead end at East Main Street and half the block of Grant Ave that meets East Main Street, reasoning due to the increase of traffic accidents. And this was also a recommendation from the fire company, the police department, and our local towing company because there's an accident there at least once a week.
What's happening is people are not listening to the no left turn. The DOT asked me if there was anything else they could do. They went through a bunch of scenarios. The problem is people are going out around the median, going the wrong way.
Coming in and across the median.
Incoming traffic and turning around, and it's causing a lot of accidents.
It's really a willing move to just cut.
It is, but we don't wanna close off the whole street because if anybody works by fourteen oh five East Main Street, um, they do have an access from Garfield, but it would be nice if they also had an act, uh, an access from Grant. So we're only closing it some, just enough that people won't go onto Main Street. But the people who own the property on Main, on Main Street, their next door, could still use the, that road to get to their property. So we're not hindering any, any, uh, people. Or from their properties, I mean.
Is there actually any properties on that half a block?
Yes, um, Mr. Marchuska owns that property there, and should he decide to sell it in half, I don't wanna take away his, uh, access or egress from it. So that way he would still be able to use it. I'm just thinking in, in the future, I wanna make sure I don't hinder somebody for not being able to sell their property or to use their property. Other than that.
Is there any other, is there any other possible uses for that street while it's closed?
No.
I don't know, but we could give that some consideration down the line. Wouldn't hurt to, to think about it down the line.
Cause I remember you were talking about, a couple of months ago, you were talking about, uh, putting a welcome to Endicott sign right, right there on that street.
Well, yeah, that can still, that can still go there, yes. That wouldn't take up that much room, but yes, that can still go there. That could still be a possibility. But a lot's going to depend on if we really get any money from the state, like they promised us for our twelve million dollar grant. So we're kind of not putting all our eggs in one basket at the moment, hoping for money we may not get. But that is, that is a possibility down the line, yes.
So that would put two welcome to Endicott signs there, right, fifty feet from each other?
Ours will be much shorter. It won't show, and ours will have no advertising on it. And it's actually not gonna say welcome. What it's going to say is Endicott Incorporated, uh, home, home of, um, Endicott Johnson and the family.
We, we don't have to discuss that now.
Yeah, you're right. We're, that's true. I'm getting carried away.
It, it sounds like it's, it sounds like it's all planned.
No, but you and I had talked about it, but you know what? We can talk about it later, but for right now, let's just decide if we're gonna close the street or have a public hearing to close the street. So I have a motion. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, rescinding local law twenty dash eighteen. Uh, no, we're holding on that. That's, um, the.
Oh, no, no, we can have that on the twentieth. That's for our park, that's for our way that we'll know, to know about the position that I have.
Okay, so we have enough time, okay. Um, rescinding local law dash eighteen, recycling facilities.
And may I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, zoning board member, county union resident, zoning, to change that to add a county union resident?
Oh, yes, you're right.
Public hearing, second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Planning board member to have a county union resident on the planning board?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, do we have the wording on those two things? I mean, this is not gonna be a requirement that we have a town unit, just that we can have one if we want one.
Exactly, exactly. Not getting in the, in the, uh, actual thing that, that's up on the, yes.
Ted, I, I circulated a copy of both those laws. I can, I can do that again if you'd like, if you want.
Uh, no, if you send them, I'm sure I have them then.
Okay, so yours is a yet, right? Okay. Now we're going to our committee report. All right, I mean, what do you like to tell us tonight?
Well, I've been, uh, working a lot on trying to, the residents and the, and the business owners in the village of Endicott, not only on the avenue, but on, on, on the north side as well. We have instigated or in.
Institute.
Institute, that's a better word. Um, curbside. What am I saying? Cafe permit.
There you go.
For the avenue. Unfortunately, Zach's having a, a hard time getting all of the restaurants in line. I mean, we talked to Grandios about the Fourth of July and fireworks and bands and whatnot, but it doesn't look like that's gonna happen. It's really only four or five businesses on the avenue that would take advantage of cafe, um, permit seating. Um, however, on the north side, we did open the north side park with several, six to eight picnic tables in the park for takeout dining from Joey's, Oaks, Antonio's, Conso's. And it seems to be going over quite well. And so we're opening from the park from five to eight so that people can enjoy their dinners instead of in their car and having eaten a dinner in my car. It is not any fun. Um, it makes a mess, so, um, so we worked pretty quickly on that and we got a lot of approval from the mayor. And yeah, we're doing whatever we can to help the restaurants and the businesses in the village of Endicott to keep their heads above water. And, um, hopefully everybody will take advantage of the restaurants that are open. Apple Fest. Uh, applications are out and are starting to come in. But we're still, we're still holding on by the thread that we're gonna be able to pull off the Apple Fest, which may be one of the only festivals in Brum County that's still gonna continue to go on. Thank God, it's in September. Um, and with, um, mosaics, we have a long list of places and, uh, possible ideas for Emily or, um, Mr. Grobo to come in and do some mosaics for the village of Endicott. I will be reaching out to her as well and, um, working on it, just getting some art and some fun stuff to look at in the village of Endicott. Uh, so again, helping the restaurants and businesses.
The art, the art trail is in October, and you might even get to use the carriage house on Wednesday to check it out.
Nice. She said. I'll, call me, I'll go.
All right. Ms. Meredith is, is going to take us over. There.
No, having that many people down there on the news.
Ask, ask, um, Mike Romeo because he said he would be interested in it if we did it.
We are, we are, um, Donna wasn't really willing to give us all the money for it. And so therefore being we're under the time cap, it's kind of hard to go to BAE or Huron and, and have them go through the legalities of making money. I really just don't see that gonna happen, unfortunately.
Well, it was a nice thought.
It was a nice thought, absolutely, and we tried, but, uh, I, you know, there's a patient on the avenue, unfortunately, by the.
The business owners?
No, I do have a buddy who does lighting, the parking, later, because I have permission to say it. So, so I'll ask his permission and then we'll talk.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it would, it would be ideal, particularly.
She offered to help, and he does the, like, like they do up in Venetian.
Oh, okay.
I don't remember what you call it, but yeah, so.
Nice. Um, it would be really nice. The avenue, um, is not, is kind of quiet, but the north side is seeing some activity up there this weekend. Granted, it was only Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so I don't know how that's gonna continue to go.
It's a start.
It's a start, you know, and, and I just, I can't see, um, getting the stage down and getting a band, which we could get for free, for free.
Yeah, that's.
But if you're not gonna have four hundred people down there.
Yeah.
Who's gonna listen to them? I, I really don't see where that's, that's gonna be a really good idea.
Okay, well.
I mean, the idea is to encourage the band to really get excited by having some people out. Times are changing very quickly.
Mm-hmm.
I hope that it all works out, but.
I hope so. It's a start.
Yes.
It's a start, that's all that matters. I think people too are a little worried about the second wave.
Exactly.
Yeah, they are.
Exactly, you know, so.
All right.
I, do you agree with me that it's best probably not to spend that kind of money?
Oh, yeah.
On a band and a stage and entire.
Oh, yeah, we can't, we can't afford to spend any money right now, no.
Right, okay, I, I guess I'm on the same page.
Oh, no, the village, the village is not spending any money on any.
No, I, I knew that.
Same page, Pat, ask.
That's true, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you, Ellie. Pat, do you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
Uh, I talked with the head of the light department in the parking lot the other day. He promises me when they have the, a meeting, he's gonna call me, so.
Good, be nice to get back to normal again, isn't it?
Yeah. So that's all I got.
Okay, nice. Cheryl, you got anything?
Um, just a few things. We are, um, working with Bob and redoing the cafe permit. We've, um, updating that a little bit and, um, putting in some, um, different job descriptions in there to cover things. So we're working on that. Hopefully we'll have it all set for a public hearing next meeting. Um, also too, is one of the things, we've got some exciting news. Hopefully we'll start seeing more business down at the airport. Um, we have interest in putting a flight school down there. I have not heard back. Have you heard back regarding the lease yet? The app, the, the contract?
No, we, uh, I revised the lease and sent it over to Gerard. He forwarded it to the company and we're waiting for their response.
Okay, yeah, cause I haven't heard anything back yet either. But it looks good for mine. I know that would be awesome because I know one of the things that are in there too, and one of the stipulations that he has talked about Gerard has is that this company, they buy gas here. And I didn't realize that Tri-Cities Airport has one of the cheapest gas prices. So we have a lot of people that do fly in to, just to buy gas. Cause Gerard's looking just pretty much to break even, not make money, and most airports, uh, jack the price up to make actually money on it. Um, so that's good, so that we see more traffic of that lately. And also, uh, we'll have more traffic with this flight school because it will.
I have seen a lot of planes.
Yeah.
Last week, a lot of planes.
Yeah, a lot of them have been coming in to buy, just to buy gas, stopping to buy gas.
To get lunch.
Yeah. Well, that's another thing that they're talking about is maybe doing, uh, one of these times is what they, they call them fly-ins and having, uh, that was one of the things we were planning on this year, having a, uh, so we can do Phil's Chicken House, uh, fly-in. But with this COVID, we ha, that, we tabled that this year, but hopefully we can get it back and do it next year. Cause those are very popular, uh, with the, uh, with the public and with the, uh, people that fly in because we get people interested in planes. But same with this flight school, we're hoping this flight school will bring more activity and more traffic down at the, um, the airport. So that will be good. Um, see, we've been working on some different codes, updating codes, just working on a lot of that. And I'll do the waiver of the cafe permit. Um, we have talked, uh, actually there has been a lot of interest that we've received regarding cafe permit. I know the mayor and I have received some phone calls and also there's been quite a bit that have gone down to code, to the code office for cafe permit, so.
Now, as of, I mean, this was last weekend.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'm not saying it doesn't change on a daily basis, and it should.
But I'm not sure if it's just all Washington Ave. I think it's, it's from throughout the whole village that they have gone down and asked regarding it. And, um, so I'll have some information under old business on that to do. But, um, we have actually been seeing some good, and we did a webinar, um, on cafe permits and how we can work it out with the, um, the state liquor authority. They're gonna start rushing a lot of these through because they know there's a high price.
For the day permit, right.
Uh, no, what it is, is the, the, um, cafe permits, what they do is we have an application that they fill out. They've gotta do a site plan. And all it has to be is like a little diagram of their building. Um, and they, um, map out, the fire marshal and the street department go out and they map out where they're gonna have their cafe in front of their building. Make sure they follow all the rules and regulations in the cafe permit for easements and also for, um, walkway for pedestrians. And then map it out, and then they draw a little diagram, and we send that along with all the other information to the state, well, they do, to the state liquor authority, and they get approval to sell alcohol there. But in the meantime, they are going to try to push these through very quickly. But in the meantime, they could still sell food there, it, cause we can do the, um, passing of the permit. That's all, as long as they get everything all done, that's taken care of at the, by the, um, deputy clerk treasurer does that, as long as they have all the information that they acquired. So that's good. So we've been having some, uh, more and more calls on those, so that's just good. Um, just working on a lot of different things, but I'll let, uh, Ted. I know, they have been.
Okay, all set?
All set.
Okay, Ted, have you got anything you'd like to share with us? Is he on mute? Are you? Ted? Okay.
Okay.
I've been, if you've got anything you would like to share with us?
No, everything's been covered. Uh, there's just one local law that I'm working on that was requested by the fire marshal, having to do with the height of grass. There's a internal inconsistency in our code that we wanted to clean up, but I'll, I'll circulate that among everyone when it's, uh, otherwise everything else is covered.
Isn't that one of the things we want us to, cause we're gonna be meeting on Thursday on code? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Linda, this is, this is Ted. I was, I, I had my stuff muted, sorry. I was talking away. Uh, but I, I did have, uh, it's okay to jump in here.
Yeah, whatever committees or, or meetings you went to, yeah.
Yeah, after the last board meeting, Cheryl and I got together to talk about the, the new rules for the hearing of visitors. And, uh, we came up with, uh, a, a, what I thought was a good set of rules. We both agreed to it. Uh, the previous meeting, two weeks before that, we had agreed to a set of rules. But then when we came to the June one meeting, Cheryl said that I agreed, but she had not agreed. So after the June one meeting, we met and we came up with more, another set of rules. And, um, we were supposed to present, we're supposed to present that to the, to the meeting tonight. And you, um, but two days after that.
I wrote it and I sent it all to you, and I sent it to you last Wednesday, and that is on our meeting tonight. I think it's under action items if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
Yes, yes, excuse, excuse me, excuse me, I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to finish. Uh, so, um, after we came up with those rules, this time I had, um, I asked Cheryl to send me an email and sign it with her name that she agreed with these, with these rules. So, uh, we both did that, we both signed it, we both agreed with the rules. But then two days later, Linda, you took those rules and rewrote them on your own. And we were supposed to be bringing those rules to the meeting tonight to discuss them and I guess vote on them. But you took them and rewrote them completely, um, so.
The way I did it.
It's what?
I talked to Nikon. That's, and that's for the state rules. We weren't following state laws. We have to follow state laws.
What? What item did we?
At action time. We're, we're done now. We're gonna talk about that at action time, and if you'd like to pass it, fine. And if you'd like to not pass it, then that's totally up to you. So now we need to go on.
Thank you.
So did you have anything you wanted me to talk about? You got interrupted. All right, you're pretty set.
Yeah, I was trying to make a note that. We got an email today, um, saying that the sales tax numbers for May. Uh, we're down about thirty-two percent statewide, um, so, uh, it looks like April was about twenty percent, May was thirty-two. So we're gonna be, you know, addressing that, watching our budget very closely, uh, put a hold on a few items and, um, you know, just to, just be very cautious going into the, the beginning of this year. We did get a, a notice from the state also about our chips funding, which is our road and concrete repairs. And they've asked us to withhold, they gave us our allocation, but, but they've asked us to reserve twenty percent of that just in case they end up pulling it, uh, later on in the year or so. We're gonna move forward with, uh, with eighty percent of our allocation. Um, we'll look at that probably later this week and start putting some, uh, plans together for, well, we already have the plans. You've just gotta scale back a little bit, uh, due to that, uh, you know, twenty percent, uh, holdback from the state. Um, but I did, I did wanna mention that, you know, we did finish the, the, uh, the fiscal year in a strong financial position. Uh, we will maintain our, our status going into this year. Uh, we will maintain our, our status going into this year. Um, a couple of things from the state. They, they do, um, different reviews now. They do what's called the fiscal stress score. They look at two, um, two areas. They look at environmental stress, and they look at fiscal stress, our finances. So, um, so this is actually the end of the nineteen fiscal year. And for environmental stress, it's basically, obviously, the environment, right? So, they look at population, poverty levels, age, tax base, uh, income, unemployment, and state and federal aid, our reliance on state and federal aid. And for environmental stress, uh, we're susceptible to moderate environmental stress. So, so some of those areas that I mentioned, um, you know, we are in a higher risk group for that, so they do, you know, they do look at that a little bit negatively. Um, so that's something, you know, as we go through projects and, you know, go for state funding, you know, those are some of the items we, we look at, we look at for, um, how can we improve some of this, some of these areas. Um, and like I said, they also look at finance too. So, they look at your, your end fund balances, your operating deficits, if there is any, uh, cash positions, use of short-term cash flow, um, and some of your fixed costs, like your benefits and your debt. Um, and for that, for this year, which was interesting, um, none of us see. So, no designation. If you score zero to thirty, it's, it's no designation. It's, it's you're in good shape. Uh, um, oh, actually, zero to forty-five, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Zero to forty-five, you're no designation. Uh, susceptible to some stress is forty-five to fifty-five, your score. Fifty-five to sixty-five is moderate, and sixty-five to a hundred is significant financial stress. So, the last two years, the village is at fourteen point six, seventeen point nine, and this year, we're actually at zero. So, we didn't score, we didn't hit any of the thresholds for any, uh, fiscal finance or fiscal stress, uh, according to the state controller.
Woo!
So, it's interesting. Uh, we are in the threshold of a couple of them, and with what's happened this year with some revenue there, we're gonna be light on, and a few other things, I'm, I'm sure it's gonna go up obviously from zero, but, um, just to reiterate, you know, reiterate, we're in a strong, we are in a strong position. Um, you know, there's a, a lot of these have come, you know, these, some of these are three-year and five-year numbers. So, you know, it's, it's not just a one-year thing. It's, it's, you know, we're moving in the right direction over the last, uh, you know, so many years, so. So, just wanted to point out that we're, we are strong, you know, and we've been through challenges before. You know, we've gone through the great recession, the flood of two thousand and eleven, a huge reduction in hereon, uh, back in two thousand and twelve, and now, now through this, uh, COVID-nineteen here, so. And each time, we've come out stronger, so hopefully, that, uh, that'll happen again this time, but, um, you know, just so everyone can see that we're, we're in a good position, you know, we'll do our best to, to stay in this state, um, through, through this challenge as well, so.
So, we, we still instituting the, the spending freeze, correct?
Yeah, we're still gonna have the spending freeze. Obviously, the numbers that came out today was thirty-two percent. Um, you know, we, our budget calls for a twenty percent reduction throughout the whole year. So, you know, if we have thirty-two percent now, hopefully, through the end of the year, you know, with that number, it's just back down to where our budget is. So, uh, so for the time being, we're gonna keep things how they are, keep a, a pipe, you know, uh, we center our finances here, and, um, you know, hopefully, that'll, you know, it'll come around now that we're opening back up and we'll get a little bit more, uh, rest of the back end as we had planned, so. Um, and then just two quick items during the agenda. We have an RFP going out for the Main Street grant, so that's the, the grant we were awarded for Washington Ave, the first block of Washington Ave. Uh, we rewarded that in the CFA round last year. So, we're, the, the RFP is for consulting services, so a part of the grant, there is money allocated for a consultant. So, now that things are, are flooding a little bit, we're gonna put that out for, ask for proposals for that from a firm, from firms. And also, we have the request for qualifications, um, for the Greater Bennington Fund projects. We got an email about a month ago that the contracts have not been accepted, that we sent back in, in last August. So, that's finally accepted, and we're able to go off to.
Do some bids?
Yeah, look for consultant work on that too, so, um, so that's gonna go, they're both gonna go out this week. Uh, and they'll both be back in the middle of July, staggered them a week apart. So, one, Main Street will come in, uh, July ninth, we'll change the date to the ninth, and then July sixteen, we'll take on both, the final day for proposals for the Bennington Fund project, so those are the.
Well, well, Anthony, thank you.
Thank you.
There's a question. Uh, in regards to the first report from the state, how many different categories are there that gives you a marking grade? Is it five, ten, fifteen?
Environmental.
Environmental.
Environmental part?
You say we're at zero.
Zero is the finance side.
Finance, okay.
So, for finance, they look at, they have a category, your end fund balance, your assigned and unassigned fund balance, and your total fund balance. They look at operating deficits, if you have an operating deficit in any of your funds. Your cash vis, cash position, so that's your cash ratio, and cash as a percentage of every monthly expenditures. Uh, your use of short-term cash flow debt, if you, if you, uh, use any of that, which we don't. Um, personal services and employee benefits, and debt service as, as a relation to your percent of revenue.
So, we're in good shape all year round.
Yeah, so all those were under the threshold of receiving a score. Obviously, the lower number, the better.
Which ones are we in questionable on? Can you shed that?
So, we're, um, for our fund balance is good. Um, anything, uh, we're at about twenty percent of our, of our annual expenditures is in fund balance, so. Controller likes two months, so I would say like seventeen percent we average, and we're at, we're at twenty, so we're a little bit above, uh, which is a good position, especially if something like this year happens where we might have to dip into some of that.
Yeah.
Um, and just our employee benefits, uh, it's a little bit high. It's just under the threshold, uh, the threshold is, anything under sixty-five, you receive no score, sixty-five percent of this formula here. And our total, yeah, three-year calculation is sixty-four point two. So, if we were a little bit higher, we'd see like two points, we'd still be, we'd still be in good shape.
Okay.
Couple of them are pretty close on, which probably will pick up a little this year, um, it's about that close.
Yeah, then you talked about the RFPs.
Yep.
Does, does that go to, uh, like, uh, say like a delta, or it goes out, so anybody can bid on this?
Yeah, so we, we publish it, publish it in the press, we send it out to firms that, um.
We've used in the past.
We do, um, we look on the, the state website as MWVE firms that we directly send it to, uh, because there are requirements, uh, thirty percent, uh, MWVE requirements for these contracts. So, we'll send it in on, uh, directly as well, um, and document all, all the job efforts we do.
Okay.
Um, and that's for both of them, so both, uh, both consulting proposals will be.
Okay, thanks.
That is, okay. All right, thank you. All right, now we'll go on to bids. Would you like to make a proposal, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Okay. Uh, request from Water Chief Operator Kevin Piro to award a low bid for the project at North Oak Ave in Overton Water Main and Service Replacement to Toroto Construction in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
I'll second that. All right, good job, Georgia. Yeah, we will need to have, um, Chris.
No, a proposal?
Yes, please, for this one.
Christie, can I?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Chapman?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Hey, the next one is, um, request from Chief Water Operator Phil Grayson to reject the low bid for the evaluated walkways from the Pleasant Mount Welding.
Going to award.
Oh, I'm sorry. Reject, no, it's reject.
Right, oh, okay.
From Mount Pleasant Welding due to failing to submit pricing for all specified items.
I'll second that. Now, so rejecting a bid, you still have to have a roll call, Bob?
Yes.
Is it connecting to Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Chapman?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
That's the first one. Uh, request from Chief Water Operator Phil Grayson to award the bid for the elevated walkways to the Cascade Foundation in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars.
I'll second that.
Christie, can I?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Chapman?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Welcome to our communication file. Motion to file them all, Cheryl?
Yep, I make a motion to file communications A through.
Yeah, actually.
B.
I'll second that. All right, all of you favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Hi.
Very good. Right, now it's for our action items.
Okay. But, um, we just, on on the agenda, she didn't, she forgot to put study proposal. So, it's the, um, the solid waste receiving station, a solid receiving station study proposal. So, um, we make a motion to, to sign and approve that from Wendell Engineering. The village has approached to treat outside biosolids with a new biosolid dryer.
I'll second that, Cheryl. Okay, um, we will probably.
Roll call.
Or don't, yes.
Yes. Sorry, Anthony.
Christie, can I?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Chapman?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Now, the next item, we were going to, uh, ask the board to approve two appointments for, uh, alternates for one for the zoning and one for the planning. But Bob has told me that we weren't doing things right before, and we needed, in the new law that he's writing, so we're going to hold off on this until we get, um, everything all legalized. Because we weren't, we weren't under the right role before, so we're gonna hold off on this. Okay, so, our next meeting.
Okay.
I, I had a question on them. Uh, are both of them for, uh, alternates or for board members?
Only for alternates. That's all it is. But we still need, we still needed to put it on, um, our code different than I realized. So, Bob's going, Bob said that's on the one he's already worked on, so we'll be able to do this in the next meeting, and, and we can vote on it then.
Okay.
Now, the next one is the protocol for hearing of visitors. Now, I sent this out after we went through, uh, NICOM rules, and I gave it to everybody on Wednesday. So, we can either vote yes, we can vote no, or we can vote to table it.
I do have something, I, I had a couple of things I wanted to say, which I started before, but, um.
All right, well, we can table it, Ted, because this is a yes or no voter. We'll table it, um, because, uh, I gave it to you last Wednesday, and if you wanted to check with me on it, you should have called me. That's why I sent it to you on Wednesday.
No, when we're gonna vote on it is the time to discuss it at the board meetings. We don't discuss all this stuff over the phone. So, if you're gonna vote on this, first you make a motion, then a second, and then you discuss it.
Okay, let's make a motion.
Okay, make a motion. For the protocols of handling the visitors.
All right, all of you favor?
I have something I'd like to say. First of all, can you read what these, what we're voting on here?
Uh, yes, and I even put it on the website so everybody could see it.
No, I would like you to read, I'd like you to read it on the meeting, so we have it in the minutes.
Sure.
Doesn't he have a copy of this?
He does, but he wants it in the minute. I don't mind doing this. This is fine.
It's a little bit redundant.
I know, but everybody can hear it that way. Uh, those people who didn't go on the website, maybe some people don't have computers.
Okay, so, be, before you do read, before you do read that, I do have a comment that I was trying to make before, and you said to wait till this period, so now, I will make my comment. And at the May, at the May eighteen meeting, the board decided that Cheryl and I would go off and have a meeting and come up with some rules for hearing of visitors. And so, we did do that. We came, and that was for the June, to bring back for the June one meeting. We brought it back for the June one meeting. Cheryl said, I agreed with those rules, but she did not agree with them. So, at the June one meeting, the board agreed again for us to go and set up some rules for a second time. So, we did. We went and had, you know, set up the rules for hearing of visitors a second time. This time, I had Cheryl send me an email and agree in writing that she agreed with the rules that we had come up with. So, I have it in writing that she agreed to them. We were supposed to bring them to tonight's meeting.
I just sent an email saying I agreed.
Yeah, she just sent an email. She didn't, she didn't put anything in writing. Now, I did put both of your ideas.
Wait, excuse me, excuse me, I, I'd like to finish. Uh, she, she sent an email that she agreed to the rules that we came up with. I sent her back an email that, that said I agreed with the rules that we worked out. So, then two days later, Linda, you took those rules all on your own. We had not even had a board meeting, and you completely changed those rules all on your own. How do you have the authority to do that?
Uh, yes, I do have the authority, yeah.
So, so are we going from a fictional signature to an actual signature?
I think we should make a motion to just table this for tonight, guys.
Well, we, what, you included all our stuff in here. She just added to it.
Yeah, because it's the state rules. I had to contact the state because we're following state rules. There was things that were against the state rules, and I had to ask permission.
Can you, can you show, can, can you show Cheryl, can you, Cheryl and I, excuse me, excuse me, Linda. Excuse me, Linda. Cheryl and I, Cheryl and I spent time on, Cheryl and I spent time on these rules because you had asked us to do this. So, can you, can you?
We gave you time, but.
Excuse me.
I sent it to you on Wednesday, too, and you still called and discussed it then, and you didn't. You wanna wait until I'm for a meeting.
Excuse me, Linda, I have the floor. Excuse me, Linda, I have the floor.
Uh, no, you don't.
I have the floor, and I'd like to finish speaking. So, if you say that the rules Cheryl and I came up with, and we both agreed in writing to them, if you say those violate some rules, some law, NICOM law, can, can you show us, Cheryl and I, what laws we violated?
The thing is, we're gonna vote on this.
No, no, can you show us the laws?
May I have a motion to table this, please?
Okay, make a motion to table.
May I have a, let's move on.
Can I, can I say something before we get into this vote?
Yes, you go right ahead, Ted.
The way we were going, we keep tabling this, but the, the people in.
I mean, it's.
I agree, that's why I.
She included everything that we talked about, that we had in our original post. She included that, and she just added to it to follow New York state laws.
Well, if I could talk for two minutes, please.
Yes, you sure can.
Go ahead, Pat, sorry.
Uh, first of all, uh, if we keep tabling this and put it off, the people in the crowd are not gonna be able to talk until Christmas time, the way this is going.
They need to, they need to talk.
Uh, but on page two, uh, I have a couple of real concerns about some of this verbiage that the, uh, uh, third paragraph, speakers need to address the board with their comment, which must be a new comment and not one that has already been stated by a previous speaker. Topic of each speaker comment will be restricted to the one listed in by their name.
Mm-hmm.
Now, right in there, you're talking about restriction of, of free speech and.
Well, that was something that Ted and I came up with.
No, no, that was not true, Cheryl. That's something Linda came up with.
No, we, we talked about that we could not repeat the same question.
That has been, we decided that in January.
That was something that you and I came up with.
And the, the second point. The second point is the next sentence down, the presiding officer may choose to answer the speaker directly or answer the que, speaker in writing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I have a problem that, uh, you know, if the mayor is the presiding officer, and each of us has an equal vote in any motion or a vote on a law, how come the, the trustees can't answer? How come only the mayor can answer the question?
Because that's how this has been set up. That's how hearing of visitors has been set up. If anybody wants to talk to you privately, they can call you, they can email you. We have all of their, your information on. This is just for the people to come make comments, and they usually just go sit back down. They don't usually, they aren't really, we aren't required to give them an answer of any sort or to make a comment. Uh, if they want us to answer, we can do so in writing. This is a village meeting. This is not a time for people to come and chat with each other. I know I chat a little too much, and I'm sorry.
I don't think these people on the Zoom are here to chat with anybody.
You know what's nice? When we get rid of this Zoom stuff, we still should have Zoom for people to watch. But when we actually have humans here in the building, we're gonna go back to our old ways where people can have a hearing of visitors. And if there's fifty people in this room, fifty people can get up. They do not have to predetermine their question. We're only doing it because of Zoom. We're only doing it because of Zoom, determining a question. Yeah, we work with it for any village board meeting. Our village board meeting is to conduct village board me, business only. I would like to have the Zoom.
So I would like to, I would like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion tonight that right now, this is the hearing, this is the hearing of visitors that's coming up, I would like to make a motion that the public is allowed to talk tonight during this Zoom meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Are you going to do a roll call vote?
Would you like to make another motion? You want to make a motion out of any clause or not? Because if we, if we pass this, we can.
You need to do a roll call vote, we don't know how the vote went.
Okay, would you like to do a roll call vote?
Sure.
Thank you.
Trustee connecting?
No.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
No.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
And Mayor Jackson?
No.
So Cheryl, are you sure you want to vote that the public can't speak because you're running for election in four months?
It's not political, Ted.
Do you want to tell the people they can't talk and still, and then go ask them for your vote?
Wow, Ted, it's not political, stop.
All right, now, we're done, we're done playing. That you and Mike connected talking by yourselves.
Line up front.
Now, would anybody, would anybody like to make a motion to accept this? Because I would like the bill, the, the visitors to be able to speak next meeting.
So don't I, I make a motion to accept, I make a motion.
No, I just want to be clear, when you say accept this, is the motion to approve the board meeting guidelines?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to accept the board meeting guidelines during Zoom meetings.
I will second that.
What are the, hey, you got to read them.
They're right on the paper, Ted, you have it.
You have to read them.
Why don't you read them?
There's sixty people, there's sixty people, there's sixty people on here listening, they don't know what you're talking about, you need to read these rules if we're going to vote for them.
The thing is, you keep talking and interrupting me, I've started them three times.
Right.
Now, I would like to read them, because I would like everybody who doesn't have a computer to know what these say. Although they should have a computer if they're watching this.
So, no, somewhere on the phone.
Village board meetings are to conduct village business. Residents may observe board meetings by going to the boardroom, when allowed to do so by the governor or by, joining by way of Zoom. In the past, we have allowed a hearing of visitors when people attend board meetings in person. Residents may voice a concern or comment regarding the village. The hearing of visitors is not a time to debate with the board. Please note, the hearing of visitors during an in-person meeting at the boardroom will be limited to those individuals physically present in the room and Zoom will be for observation only. All residents have the opportunity to contact all board members by email or phone or letter. Their contact information is listed on the Village of Endicott website. A hearing of visitors is not a requirement at any municipal board meeting. And I think everybody could call anybody at any time, that's twenty-four seven, you can't beat that. These Zoom board meeting guidelines below are only for when our board meetings are expressly on Zoom because we cannot meet in person. Here they are. Speakers need to contact the mayor's secretary by emailing mayor, may, M A Y O R sec at Endicott, New York, Endicott NY dot com. No later than noon on Friday before a board meeting to have their name placed on the signing sheet to speak at the meeting. Speakers will be required to include their name and the topic of their comment in their email to the mayor's secretary. All comments must be about village business. A lot of lists of speakers and their topics will be emailed to each board member the Friday before that board meeting. At board meeting conducted by way of Zoom, speakers will state their name, screen name or phone number and their topic of comment. Speakers, speakers will use the raised hand feature, the icon is a picture of a hand on Zoom, and a straighter can cross-reference the speaker's name on the signing sheet. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers need to address the board with their comment, which must be a new comment, not one that has already been stated by a previous speaker. The topic of each speaker's comment will be restricted to the one listed by their name, sign and sheet. Speakers will have three minutes to address the board. The presiding officer may choose to answer the speaker directly or to answer in writing. If a speaker wishes to talk directly to another, they can do so by phoning them or emailing them. The board member's contact information is on the Village of Endicott website. This is not a time for branding for the audience. In addition to the public hearing of visitors, the public may contact the mayor or any trustee with any concerns or comments. Again, contact information is website. If the Zoom board meeting guidelines are adopted by June fifteenth, tonight's board, they will be implemented by, and I put July sixth, but now, so we're going to be for the twentieth. We will discuss that next. Um, the board meeting and will continue as long as we cannot have meetings in the boardroom at the municipal building. These rules do not apply to public hearings. Public hearings is normal, people can speak, they don't have to sign in ahead of time. And for public hearings, they can speak as long as it's on the topic that the public hearing is for. Now, I have, I have had a motion and I take it, I have a second. Okay?
I, I had, before, before we vote, I do have two comments. Uh, you have a feat, you have a feature in there where people on Zoom can push the button, there's a, we have to tell them how to find it. But there's a button on the screen that they can push and there's a little hand that gets raised up and that tells Anthony that they want to speak. But you don't, you didn't provide for, if someone just phones in, how does, how does Anthony know that they want to talk?
Well, he'll have their phone number and he will, he will get on and he will ask them. Because we had, that's why we ask, that's why we write into their questions, we ask them for their phone number so that we can phone them that way.
So if they, if they, if they, if they email their comment in by, uh, or that they want to spot, talk by noon on Friday, then, uh, you'll. Yeah, I'd like to finish here. So they can email their, their, uh, request in by Friday at noon that they want to speak on the, on the Zoom meeting. Anthony will, and they'll, they'll have to give their phone number also. You don't have that on here, you don't have it on here.
Let me see, maybe I don't, let me see. Uh, we look.
It says by contacting, um, oh, that's the board member, sorry.
Screen name, oh, it is on there, screen name, their regular name, their screen name and their phone number and the topic they want to talk about. So then the other con, the other thing I, the other thing I have a problem with is you are saying in these rules here that they're all, that you only want to allow them to talk on one topic that they, that they email in. So they've got three minutes to talk, if they want to talk about three topics, that's restricting their right of free speech.
They can tell me when they send in for their topic, I should have put that plural, they can talk about as many topics as they want, as long as they tell me ahead of time, and that's fine. Just let me know ahead of.
So do you want to correct, do you want to correct this sheet of rules?
I added the word topic.
So do you want to correct this sheet of rules and send that back out to us tomorrow?
I can send it, I just put the S on it myself, can everybody put the S on it themselves?
I think so. That way we don't hold this over.
We don't want to hold this over, Ted, would you like to pass?
No, I'm not going, I'm not going to hold it over, but I would like to have you change, change this and put it in writing and send it to us tomorrow, that they can talk on as many topics as they want, as long as it fits three minutes.
Within their three minutes.
I will put the S on, yes, within three minutes.
Uh, so that's three minutes, so you will, you will change this and email.
Look, look, I, I made, we made a motion.
I have a question for that, could you? On the, uh, still stuck on this, the presiding officer may choose to answer a speaker directly, but nobody else can. Can you cite, uh, a municipal law where, uh, someone can just say, I'm going to be the only one that can speak and the other people cannot speak? Because, something in the law or is that something that, if the three, three here vote, that's the way it's going to be, that's the way it's going to be? Is there freedom of speech, uh, laws there that might be, uh, might be, uh, what's the word?
Hindred?
Being, uh, violated.
Yeah, no, there's no state law on this, the, the state law says that each municipality can set their own rules for meetings. And a lot of municipalities have all of the comments directed to the presiding officer, the presiding officer is the person that runs the meeting. Um, so that's not unusual. Uh, in terms of your, uh, steez, you each have an opportunity to speak during the meetings. So if you have, um, statements that you wanted to provide during the meeting, you, uh, make those statements. So it doesn't prevent you from speaking, so it's not a hindrance on your free speech, it's just the orderly conduct of a, of a public meeting.
Can we comment about a subject that, uh, the speaker talked about or ask a question on?
Absolutely.
Yeah, when, when.
Later on or?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
When you're trying to speak, the idea is that it be done orderly.
That's all, it's just an order.
So then also, to, to carry on with that, if someone is on the Zoom talking and asks a question, a board member can answer the question also, right?
Well, under these rules here, uh, if there are questions, they're directed to the presiding officer. And the presiding officer responds to the, uh, the questions or doesn't respond to the questions, there's no obligation to respond.
But if they want to address a question to a board member, then the board member, uh, can answer also.
Yeah, when, yeah, Ted, after, after your call, um, when you're trying to speak.
I'm, I'm asking Bob.
Well, the way I, I read the rules as written here is that the presiding officer chooses to answer the speaker, uh, either directly or in writing. And, um, the board members can certainly contact the speakers by phone or email if they're, if they're contacted. But at least according to these rules, uh, the comments are directed to the presiding officer.
So according to these rules, if someone is on doing their three minutes and they ask somebody a question directly, these rules are going to say that only Linda can answer and no one else can answer when they get asked a question?
I would encourage the board to talk about what kind of procedure you want. I mean, do, do you want to have a process that allows the trustees to respond to questions? Uh, a, a lot of municipalities do, most municipalities do. Um, some municipalities have all the questions go directly to the presiding officer and they're either responded to or not by the presiding officer. So I, I think you guys need to decide what, how, how you want to run a meeting here.
Well, we were all elected, we, we were for the board, to the board, we all have one vote, Linda does not have two votes or three, everybody has one vote. So if Linda is allowed by these rules to talk and answer questions to the public, then everybody on the board should have the same right to ta, to answer questions.
I have, I have a motion. Why don't we just have a motion to do away with hearing of visitors altogether? And just hold on to our regular village business meeting, talk about village business. If our residents would love to contact us, I would be more than happy, and I know you all would be more than happy, to talk to them privately. This is turning out to be a spectacle, this is a business meeting, and, but, but whatever you guys want to decide, you guys can tell me what you think.
But the thing is, is, is they have the hearing of visitors first, then we have a section where the trustees can speak. So at that time, the trustees can answer their questions.
Right, they can make a comment, right.
I mean, so there is time to speak and answer their questions. It's just like Bob said, this is just in, in way of, in order of the major to do it.
Hey Ted.
Uh, Cheryl, if you, if your memory is, if your memory is good, I tried to say some comments during the, the time when trustees can talk, and I was forbidden to do that by Linda. If someone asks us a question on, we were elected by these people, if someone asks us a question.
You can, you can speak at that time and answer them, that's why the hearing of visitors is first. And that way you can write the thing, the, the question down and you can answer it at your time, because your time is unlimited.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Where's, where's our time, Cheryl?
And this wouldn't be under the comments for the trustees, because the, the trustees is only for committee meetings. We have to make up some special rules, which we talked about at the very end of the meeting day, so people could make comments. So we could also do that if you guys would like to.
Well, I think that there should be, there should be, there should be a comment time.
We could talk under unfinished business or something like that.
Yeah, I think there should be, I think there should be a comment time to answer their questions.
Can I say something? Hey Ted, uh, I think we better compromise on this, because if you keep it up, which I'm in agreement with you on, but if, if they're about ready to cancel the, uh, hearing of visitors, we better do something to save that issue, okay?
So how about, Ted, we put a comment time for the trustees to answer any, some of those questions?
At the very end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, how's that?
Yeah, just like they do at the county union, that was, that, we talked about that anyway.
We did talk about that.
Yeah, we talked about that.
I would, uh, I would agree to do that, but it's either all of us or none of us.
Well, everybody can talk at the end of the meeting. Everyone, I, we go around, just like we do for the committee reports, we go around after everything is said and done, just like the town of Union does, you've been there. And they say, well, do you have anything you'd like to add for tonight?
So we'll add this section to the end of the meeting and all five of us can't, do not talk during hearing of visitors. We take, we answer those questions at the end.
You can, yes.
Including the ma, including the mayor, right?
Oh, yeah, I mean, any of us can answer, yeah. It's just like, like I said, you've been to the town and union meetings and they work out very well. Uh, good old Tommy Augustine, he always says, unfortunately.
We're, we're talking about, we're talking about this meeting. So Linda, if someone asks you a question, what you're saying is you are not going to be able to answer it, just like we are not going to be able to answer it.
No, I can't, that's how we have.
You can.
But you know what?
You can, but we can't.
If they don't want me to, I won't.
Well, we can, we can do it, we do it at the end of the meeting, I think we all do it at the end of the meeting, is that fair?
Sure, I don't mind waiting till the end.
Yeah, the point of the hearing of visitors is to give the people a chance to speak. And so the idea is we're giving the people, uh, three minutes to speak on the topics that they have signed up for. Um, and if you want to allow responses later in the meeting, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, I think at the very, very end of the meeting, it would be fine.
Does that include all five people?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's not a problem, because most of us won't answer. Uh, if you have remembered, when we had meetings in January and February.
You can't, you can't say that, there's, might be things that we do need to answer, I mean, depending on the question, they do deserve an answer.
But like, when we have the meetings in January and February, uh, people get up and they voice their concern. And usually that's pretty much it, but usually it's only two, three people here, we talked for half an hour with them, it was kind of nice. With so many people on, it's hard, so keeping it to the end is probably the best way. Next, we could answer everybody all at once.
So I'm confused on what you're, I'm confused on what you're proposing. Are you proposing that we are allowed to answer during their three minutes or that we can sometimes, and sometimes at the end of the meeting?
No, we're talking at the end of the meeting, Ted.
For the Zoom meetings, it will always be at the very end of the meeting.
And during the three minutes, none of us will answer any questions?
Correct.
And if they ask you a question, Linda, you will not answer, is that correct?
I don't want to answer, no, that's fine, I don't mind not answering.
But you're saying you will not answer, right?
Well.
Oh, come on, Ted. You heard what Pat said.
He, we'll, we'll, we'll answer, we'll ans, everybody can answer at the end of the meeting. Um, we'll put it as number, uh, right under executive session, we'll put comments from trustees, again, how's that?
I'm not making any promises to anything, because I want to get this over with, otherwise we just.
And then, and then we can, and fifteen will be adjourned. How's that, Pat?
We're heading that way, so Ted, come on, vote yes or no, do you want to pass this?
Wait, 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 let's make sure we're all on the same page.
Sure, sure.
Ted, after, under executive session, we'll put comments from trustees, how, or, or trustees slash mayor. How's that?
That sounds good, but in, in these rules that Linda just read, those are going to have to be corrected so that, and we can vote on it tonight, wait, wait a minute, Cheryl, Cheryl. Cheryl, let me finish my question. We need to, we can vote on this tonight, but we need to correct the wording in here. So it says the, the board will not answer during the three minutes, they'll answer at the end of the meeting. Is that agreeable to everybody?
We can just say we will not answer the questions and then, at the end of the meeting, should we choose to, we can. So we won't have to add the second part, but we will add the first part, I totally agree with you.
Should we just make a new motion?
I'm going to make a new motion here.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to make a new motion to.
Can the presiding officer make choose, to ans, to answer directly or to answer the speaker in writing? And we'll just pick up that sentence.
Okay, we're going to remove, make the motion to remove that sentence and also to add the sentence that board.
No, we, we will add to our agenda, we will add to our agenda that we can do that. We don't have to put it in writing that we're going to answer.
Under new business or? Okay.
We'll put it under.
We're going to make, we're going to make a new item on the agenda.
We'll make it number thirteen.
So, so go ahead, Cheryl, go ahead, Cheryl, with your ru, your wording on how this will be worded.
Just make the motion.
Make motion.
We're just going to make a motion to change, can I make a, a motion to accept this and then we can make a motion to add the, uh, comments to the agenda? To modify the agenda?
Why don't we do it like this, why don't we have a motion to approve the board meeting rules as amended? And the, and there's gonna be three amendments to it.
Right.
One amendment is to delete the, um, sentence that says the presiding officer may choose to answer the speaker directly, or to answer the speaker in writing.
Mm-hmm.
Another amendment is to make plural, the topics of each speaker's comment will be restricted to the ones, we just have a, a one-
Okay.
Listed by their name on the sign and sheet.
Mm-hmm.
And then the, the last edit would be, uh, changing July sixth to July twentieth.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't solve the whole issue that we started discussing here, was, that leaves Linda a va-
Um, this is one motion, I'm gonna be making another motion, Ted.
Uh, okay, make the motion, and I'll make my comment after you make the motion.
Well, we have to, we have to pass this first before I can make another motion.
So is there a motion and a second right now?
Yes. To what Bob just said about amending the, um, the-
Yeah, let's, let's, let's have a new motion in the, in the second.
All right, I make a new motion to, um-
Well, I mean, we'll have to repeat it, I, I think everyone understands-
Yeah, make, yeah.
It's approving the guidelines as-
Wi, as amended, ma, approving the guidelines as amended.
Well, we gotta see, we gotta hear what it is. Can, can you read it, Bob? I mean, we gotta vote, we gotta know what we're voting on here.
Bob just read it. Oh my God.
Bob just read it.
All right, so the, the amendments are going to be to delete the sentence that says the presiding officer may choose to answer the speaker directly, or to answer the speaker in writing. We're going to, um, in, in two paragraphs above that, we're going to add an S after topic, and an S after one, make those plural. And then on the second to last paragraph, we're changing July sixth to July twentieth.
I'll second that. Do you wanna, do you wanna do a roll call, just so people can hear who?
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorn?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Uh, no, it still leaves Linda being able to answer questions, and we can't.
No, now, now I'm making another motion, that we add comments from trustee-
Yes.
Uh, to mayor, under executive session, and on our agenda.
I'll second that.
And those comments can be m, made on what, anything?
Yes, yes.
Did you say after executive session?
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, 'cause if we don't go in executive session or anything, is that, is that-
That's right before the adjourn.
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds good, yeah.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorn?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Very good, now we can go on. Request to cancel the V O E board meeting for July sixth, which is the July fourth weekend, and for August third. We're going to take off like we have to spend every year for vacation. Um, so do I have a motion to cancel those, particularly to a board meeting?
I make a motion to cancel those, I don't want me on vacation. Second.
Okay. Yeah, we might as well.
Yes.
Trustee Dorn?
No, I wanna work.
Are you per serious?
No, that's, yes.
That's a gun, yes.
Trustee Warner?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's okay, but it passes. All right, now we have number E. So may I have a motion for number E?
Request to appeal a freedom of information request, what, that, um, Bob, that's you?
Yeah, this is a, uh, FOIL request that was submitted, um, by, uh, Phil Houston, and it was, um, he, he appeals, he, he's looking for a series of emails, he appeals the request, uh, to the board, and the board needs to determine whether or not to, um, or how to act on this. And, and I will say, I, I feel kinda compelled to, to give some advice here right off the bat. Um, I, I, I saw that the, I saw the emails that, um, Anthony provided in the initial, uh, disclosure as the record access officer. And then I went back and looked at my own emails, even though that, those weren't part of the request, although I was C C'd on a couple of emails that were to the mayor, um, from D E C when they were issuing the permit. And those were not provided in the initial disclosures. So, what I would recommend is that the board remand this back to the, um, record access officer to do an I T, uh, review, to ensure that we have all of the emails that are, or all the records that have been requested for disclosure.
We can do that.
Okay.
The thing is, most of our conversations have been in private person.
Well, no, other than that, it's true, it's, I, there was a couple that I had, that I thought Linda had already given, so we didn't wanna duplicate them.
Yeah.
Do you want us to duplicate them no matter what?
Um, I think it's best if everyone sends everything to Anthony, um-
Okay.
Yeah, we thought we did, I'm sorry. If there's something that you got C C'd on that we missed, could you tell us later what they were, so we can look for them?
Yeah.
Because, because, um, we, we might have seen your name on it, and decided we didn't dare put it on.
That we didn't know if we had to.
So, so if you would let us know, we would be glad, 'cause we couldn't find anything.
They weren't attorney clients, it, it was emails that I just happened to be copied on from D E C, there was, uh, three or so of them.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, so I think we need to do, uh, a more thorough, um, word search-
Okay.
From an I T perspective.
Okay, we can do that.
On that too, is, um, he was asking for emails from like, two years ago, or a year ago. We don't have any of that, 'cause you weren't involved.
Well, they, they weren't from you individually, I mean, if there, if there were emails to the former mayor, or for, former trust that we have on our system, those would come up in the search.
They would have come up in the search.
The former mayor took the computer.
Yeah, he took his computer.
So, so what, so what I would recommend, yeah, it's gonna be on the server, so we oughta, we oughta search what's on the server. So, what I would recommend is a motion to, um, to grant the appeal to the extent of remanding this matter back to the record access officer for, uh, further, further review.
Do you have all that in, Ted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, is that a motion for, for Bob? Very good, very good.
Hey Bob.
Yeah.
Now-
I second.
Yeah, Bob, I, I know I've, uh, received copies of emails from, from you, from, uh, Joe Sluzar. Am I supposed to present those, even though they were not copied on?
No, that, it, that would be an attorney client, if I'm sending it to you, it would be part of the attorney client privilege.
That's where it gets tricky, we're not sure.
Right.
Yeah, because we see your name on it, and we figure, oh, we're not allowed to do it, so that's why we didn't send them.
Okay, so, if, yeah, not, yeah, so-
But you can let us know which ones they were.
Yeah, if you wanna just send them on, and we can, Anthony and I will take a look at them, and if it's privileged, then it won't be approved.
But if you already have them, so you can let us know which ones they were, it would be easier for us to work for them.
Well, I, I can tell you the three or so that I found, but, but I think everyone ought to-
No, it's okay, we can go back.
Yeah.
And then the ones, if you duplicate them, and I duplicate them, that's just, we'll duplicate A.
Yeah, then, no, no, okay. Very good, okay, we can do that.
That'll make Mr. Houston happy.
That's not a problem. We, we don't have a very exciting life, I think everybody's bored with us.
I have a motion and a second on that.
Roll call.
Yes.
Trustee Dorn?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay, now number F.
Request for proposals for primary delivery and administrative surface of two thousand nineteen New York Main Street grant.
I'll second that.
Proposals.
Yeah. Nice.
Finally moving.
Okay.
Uh, Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorn?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay, all right, quest for qualifications, Greater Binghamton Fund projects.
Second, second.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorn?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Supplemental agreement number two, adding fourteen K for the right-of-way acquisition.
I'll second that.
For McKinley?
McKinley?
Watson.
Watson.
Maybe some right-of-way work over there, part of the project?
I'll second that.
No, it's part of the grant.
Uh, through the M P S.
Yep, yep.
Uh, okay, Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorn?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And Trustee Warner?
Yes.
My hand is returned. I, I make a, no, no, oh. No, um, I'm sorry, this goes under unfinished business, I apologize to that. Where are you? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Jumping the gun. Okay, I'll second that.
I'll vote in favor. Anybody opposed to pay the bill?
No, we haven't heard from Ted.
Uh, everybody was laughing and talking, I don't even know what you did.
We paid the bill. The bill?
Oh, I say yes.
Thank you. That's me, unfinished business, I'm sorry I didn't get it, put it on there, forgot. Um, I would like to make a motion to waive the outdoor cafe fees, one ninety-six X six, of the site review plan, annual rental fee, security deposit for the year two thousand twenty, twenty, only, due to COVID nineteen. I, last time, I forgot to add all those into my motion, the motion.
As long as everybody's very much aware that it's only for this year.
They're aware for this, this year, and if they do apply next year, they will have to also go through the site plan review again.
Nice. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, you have good vote money.
Trustee Dorn?
Sorry.
Hi.
Trustee Chapman?
Hi.
Trustee Warner?
Yes. So I have an item for an un, unfinished business. At the last, uh, board meeting, uh, Linda, you brought up the idea of rescinding the, um, the new zoning law. I just wondered if you and Cheryl, uh, still are, have that same position on that?
Yes, and that's why we called for the public hearing on the twentieth.
Okay, so what I would like to do is, I would like to make a motion that, at the, at that meeting, we made a mo, we, we passed a, we made a motion and we passed it, to tell the village attorney to start the paperwork for rescinding the law. But tonight, I would like to, to make a motion that we rescind the fi, the, the law that was done on March, May seven.
But we, but I already did that. That's what my-
No, we, we made it, at the last meeting, we passed a resolution to have Bob start the paperwork. So tonight, I would like to ma, make a motion that we rescind the law that we passed on May seven.
All right.
So, Ted, um, in order to undo a law or repeal a law, you have to go through the legislative process again. That's why I drafted the law, we're gonna have a public hearing, and then, uh, a seeker review and a vote. So are you looking to have the vote prior to the public hearing?
Am I looking to have the, say that again?
Well, it sounds like you're calling for a vote on, on repealing or rescinding the law. Um, but that requires a public hearing, as well as a two thirty-nine review, a planning board review, all of the legal procedures that were used for zoning.
Okay, so what I'll do is, I'll, I'll change my motion, I'll change my motion. I would like to make a motion that we do not file the law that was passed on May, May seven. We do not file that at Albany.
We can't do that.
Um-
'Cause didn't, I asked that last meeting.
That was a big sigh.
We had to raise up a memo, he said we have to have a law before we can-
There's, there's no law that says you have to send it to Albany.
Well, there, there is a law that says that it has to be filed, there's a state law that says it has to be filed, um, wi, with the state. So there, there is a state law in that regard.
Within twenty days, right?
It's, I'm sorry?
Within twenty days, I think.
That's exactly right. But it's done on an administrative level, so it's not done by virtue of a board vote. It's done, you know, through the, the village manager, or the village clerk's office, um, just as an administrative task. Now, we are, uh, holding off on filing that law until the protest petitions have been reviewed. So that's why it has not been filed yet, even though we're beyond the twenty-day time period. Um, so, I, I mean, that, that's where we're, we're at, Ted.
So what I'll do is, I'll abandon that motion, and I'll make a third motion, this is the last one. Uh-
Wow.
I would make a motion that, I would make a motion that we declare all of the signed petitions valid, regardless of when they were turned in, and also that they have, that they meet the twenty percent threshold.
Well, you know, we, we need to have a factual basis for making that decision, Ted. And, and that's the whole point why we hired Delta to review those, to determine whether or not the petitions are valid. No, nobody sitting here can, can tell us whether or not they meet the twenty percent threshold. That's a, interview and-
Well, the, the opinion of the board is that they want to rescind the law. They don't wanna have that law anymore. So there should, we could just end all this, and declare that these petitions are valid, and no matter when they were turned in, and they, they do meet the twenty percent threshold, therefore the law is dead. That's what the board wants to do, they wanna kill this law. So that, that's my motion.
We're gonna follow up on it.
And, and not go through with the repeal process?
And, and say that again?
And, and are you saying not to go through with the repeal process?
The repeal process?
Doing it the, the way you proposed, Ted, leaves us very exposed. So what would happen is that somebody could appeal that decision, and go prove to a court that the petitions did not meet the twenty percent threshold, if that's, if that's the way this turns out.
It was open for a lawsuit.
At which point, the law would be approved, and we'd have no deal in place.
That doesn't make sense.
So I, I think that's-
So, so let me, so let me, so then I'll, I'll make some, I'll, I'll abandon those three motions, and I will make a comment here. Just so everyone knows, who's on, listening on here tonight, it's going to take six weeks to rescind this law. We have to have a public hearing, we have to send it to Brum County for their report, we have to have a planning board meeting, we have to have a seeker meeting. All of these meetings require five or state public notice in the paper. So it's gonna take six weeks, may I finish? It's going to take six weeks to rescind this law. Now, it's only gonna take three or four weeks to find out the report of the petitions. So what I, what I'm telling everyone here tonight is, there are not enough petitions to meet the twenty percent. If you're counting the petitions that are turned in before May seven, there, there is not going to be enough petitions to- Excuse me, may I, excuse me, may I finish? There is not going to be enough petitions to, to kill this law. So, what's gonna happen is, the law's gonna become valid in three weeks. When these petitions show that there's not enough, the law will be, come valid in three weeks, basically three weeks plus, uh, two days, 'cause it takes a couple of days to get it to Albany. So then the company can come in, and the very next day, and get a building permit from the village of Endicott. Then, let me, let me finish, Bob. Then the, then Linda can have two choices. She can either continue to rescind the law, which will still take the three more weeks. However, if it gets rescinded, they will be grandfathered in with that building permit, because they got a building permit under a valid, so they'll get their building permit that way. And if she, uh, stops rescinding the law, and lets the law stand, they still get their building permit. So this is a cleverly crafted scheme for them to get a building permit, and make us look like we don't know what the hell's going on.
Except that I didn't know that, 'til you told me.
Either way, either way, either way this scheme is pulled off, this is a fast one they're pulling on the village of Endicott voters. Either way this thing is pulled off, they're gonna get a building permit. And they're, they think we're gull, gullible enough not to know it.
Ted, the, the way I view the protest petitions, Delta is not going to make the decision whether or not those protest petitions are valid. They're going to provide us a report with an analysis of vice. And that would then be presented to this board to, at, 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 at the July twentieth, I believe, meeting, would be to determine whether or not those protest petitions are valid. Okay? So that, that would be a board vote by resolution. So that, the way I view this is, that decision would be made by the board on the same night that the board can vote to repeal the law. So all of it...
Well, Bob, you, Bob, you know we're not gonna get ready to, to appeal that thing by July twenty. We haven't even started anything yet. We don't, we don't even have a building, we don't even have a public hearing till, uh, July twenty.
Right, so, right, so Ted, wha- what, now that the law has been, um, drafted and circulated, what I'll do tomorrow is send it to, uh, two thirty-nine for their review. They have thirty days, so that, tha- that time period will have expired by then. We also have to get the planning, our local planning board to meet and review it. We've got plenty of time to do that, we might have to call a special meeting.
Uh, my point is, in the meantime, those petitions are coming in, oh, there's not enough petitions to hit twenty percent, and you know they're at twenty percent. We both loo... We know that those p-... We, we, I've looked at them. Petitions are now...
Petitions out there, or just...
Those petitions, and that, within about three weeks. So that still leaves another three weeks where we, we're trying to rescind the law. So once those petitions are declared no good, they can walk in, tha- that means the law's valid, they can get their building permit under a valid law. And then whether we rescind... Whether we rescind the law after that, or whether we rescind the law, it doesn't matter, because they've still got their building permit. Now I know that, I know you're trying to, um, this is what Linda, Linda's been trying to do for a couple of months, is, is to, um, confuse the people on all this stuff.
Well, Ted, Ted, what, what procedure would you recommend then? I mean, cause I, the, the only thing we can do is, is what I've just discussed. We've got the, the petitions that are being reviewed, the board will decide whether or not they're valid at the July twentieth meeting. At that same meeting, we'll have a public hearing to repeal the law, and I would expect a board vote at that point in time to repeal it, if that's the way the board wants it to go. So, both of those decisions would be made at this meeting, and the laws would be spontaneously after that.
Okay, I haven't had enough time to spot your question, but I will come up with an answer for you. However, just off the top of my head, we could, off the top of my head, excuse me, Linda, off the top of my head, we could rescind the law first, and not even look at the petitions till on the law.
I mean, did they...
I know, I know, now saying, we can't rescind the law until it becomes a law. So that, that really locks it in, that they, that they're gonna, that the law becomes valid before we can rescind it.
But I didn't even know that until two weeks ago, when you asked Bob, to be honest with you, I did not know that it had to become a law first, until you asked all those questions at the last meeting, and Bob answered you with that, until he...
But now you do. Now you do, because I just, now you do.
That's when we asked it, if we don't have, if, if we can stop filing it, and he said, no, we couldn't. The next time we could just stop filing it, like we did our races. Remember the races we voted for last year? We rescinded them right away, and so I assumed, and yes, I know, it assumes, I assumed we could do the same thing. I had absolutely no idea that we had to...
So let me, let me ask you this question. Let me ask you this question, Linda. You have, you have done a hundred and eighty percent, uh, flip on this. You were totally for this, uh, law, now you're totally wanna rescind it. Does that mean you do not want them to have a building permit, and you do not want them to move here?
Oh, I want them to move here, I'm not anything to do with the building permit, that's no longer my problem. I wanted it rescinded, because the DEC lived up to their promise, and I didn't need to put in restrictions. So I thought, why should I put the village through a possible lawsuit, when the DEC is doing our work for us? It made common sense to rescind it, because the DEC was doing what they said they were gonna do. I didn't, I didn't trust them until this. I really didn't, and why we made the law, we didn't trust the DEC.
The DEC is, the DEC is only doing their own work, they're not doing our work, and you know that.
They're doing...
The DEC, the DEC... The DEC is only concerned with an air quality permit. We're concerned with a building permit. Two different permits. We can't give an air quality, they cannot give a building permit.
That has nothing to do, nothing to do with the law.
But that has nothing to do with it, I only made up the restriction, so that, so that they would have to follow the air permit law. I didn't trust them to actually follow the permit.
Recycling restrictions, right, guidelines.
I didn't trust them to do that, and now they're doing it.
From New York State and federal.
Ted, we can talk about this all night, but I think we'll just, uh, table it for now, um, because we have to, we have to do what we have to do, and we have to find out if those petitions are legal, that's our legal obligation from what I understand, unless I'm wrong.
Well, I made my point, tha- I made my point, the people that are listening now know what's behind the scenes of this whole thing.
That's fine, you have a right to your opinion, no problem.
Hey, Bob. On your, uh, Friday, June twelve memo you sent out, you talked about these things being addressed Monday night now. Or are we gonna give you the go-ahead to send the two thirty-nine to county?
We did.
Well, I, I, I interpret the, the fact that you've scheduled the public hearing...
It's automatic?
I interpret that to mean that you, you give me the go-ahead to get these, the procedures in place.
We did, yes.
Alright, and how about the planning board meeting? When can that be?
At, any time you can get it scheduled, you just need, what, seven days' notice to put in the paper.
Alright.
Do you have to...
Right?
No, no, we, we can go forward with the planning board meeting, it's, it's a, it's three days' notice for those two public meetings, seventy-two hours, but, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll connect with, um, with Joe, and try and get, uh, that planning board meeting scheduled, so they can weigh in on this local law.
So this could come together on the twentieth?
Yes.
The point is to have both of those things accomplished before July twentieth, so that this will be primed to have a public hearing and a vote on July twentieth.
Yep.
Bob, I had a, I had a, I had a thought here, Bob. What if we hold the, the, uh, filing of the law until the night that the law is rescinded?
Yeah, tha- that's what I was trying to get at, Ted.
That's what he said he was doing.
So, here's how I expect those petitions to play out, okay?
He missed all that.
Delta is going to produce a report that analyzes the validity of these petitions. Um, I'll probably send you guys a letter, um, as well, kind of addressing some of the legal concerns. You put those and vote, make a, make a motion, or I could even prepare a resolution, determining whether or not those petitions are valid. That would be voted on, on July twentieth, Ted. So the, the law can't be filed, or shouldn't be filed, until we determine the validity of those, uh, of those petitions.
Add a board meeting.
Add a board, add a board, that's the overall vote. Not a meeting, right.
Right, right.
So, so that would all be done on July twentieth.
What you're saying is, we will, we will, we will file the petitions, and we will vote on rescinding the law on the same night.
I, I don't think, I don't think we have any choice, July twentieth is our next meeting, so there is nothing, we don't have any...
That's what we're talking about, Ted, of doing.
To do it, I don't think, I don't think we could do it any other way.
Okay, let's, let's, so let's make a motion that that hap-... Let's make a, let's make, could I make a, could I, uh, make a comment here?
Answer my question.
Bob, let's make a motion that nothing happens with filing that law until we have a meeting, it may not be July twenty, cause a lot of things can happen in a month. We do not file that law until we have a meeting, and we reslaw, and we get the report, and vote on the report of the petitions, uh, on the same night, and then we do not file the law till five days after that night.
Well, five days after Jul- uh, uh, when it's decided on?
We have a meeting, whether it's July, whether it's July twenty, or whether it's in July twenty, whatever meeting, we, we vote on the petitions, and we vote on rescinding the law on the same night, and we do not file the law until five days later.
Wouldn't it be easy to call it?
Are you looking to rescind the, the law before the, the first one is filed?
Say that again?
Are you looking to file the, the rescission law before the first initial law has been filed?
No, I'm looking to vote on the petitions. It's hard to talk with...
Was that to send them in both the same envelope? And, and I think that makes a lot of sense.
Right.
We'll just file them together.
Right.
There'll be local laws eighteen and nineteen, um, and they'll be filed one right after the other, there will be no gap in time between...
They'll be together, Ted.
Hey Ted, Ted, you can drive it, I'll thread shotgun, okay?
The laws will be together.
Thelman and Louise, yeah, Ted, Pat.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't believe this is gonna happen till I see it happen, but, um...
Well, we can't predict the future, let's do it.
Yeah, come on. And that means you gotta be here as well.
Yes.
In person.
There you go.
Have some faith, Ted.
Alright.
I don't, I don't see any of you guys, I don't see any of you guys wearing masks. You want me to be there, you don't have masks on.
We have masks, we do wear masks. We got masks, but we're also over six feet apart.
You, you don't have masks on.
But we're also six feet apart, we don't have to have masks on if you're over six feet apart.
Well, then don't tell me to be there.
You have a mask on, I saw the mood, I...
Okay. No, 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 hold on, hold on.
So Bob, can you, uh, Bob, can you, before, there's, there's, Bob, there's so many people talking, can you review what we've just, uh, kind of agreed on?
Okay. We, we've got two things going on simultaneously, and, and we've got parallel tracks, they're gonna happen at the same time. One is that the review of the protest petitions is ongoing by Delta. They're gonna produce a report, I'm gonna look at it, I'll send you guys a letter, we'll get that ready to go for a, a resolution on, uh, July twentieth, okay? At the same time, we have a local law process to repeal the recycling law, and that will go through the two thirty-nine and the local planning board procedures, we'll get, and a public hearing on July twentieth, and we'll get that ready for a vote on that same day, July twentieth. Assuming that the petitions were not sufficient, and the first law is valid, then there can be a vote to repeal it. Both of those laws, eighteen and nineteen, will be filed with the state, uh, on the same day, if you wanna send them in the same package, or do the Thelman-Louise thing.
Yeah, that's very... I'll ride with you too.
There you go, I think you'll go too.
Go too. We'll all go, road trip.
Road trip, alright.
Road trip.
I'm trying to get myself into trouble here.
Can we, can we use the village car?
No.
John.
I got a new, I got a brand-new Lincoln that's just getting to ride.
Oh, then let's go in your car, yeah, alright.
Reset, Ted.
Okay, go ahead, Pat.
Okay, two quick things. One, uh, we talked about briefly about, uh, a couple of doctors and experts that the protest group had, is to be, uh, help us as a consultant with the DEC. I'm still in discussion with a couple of those guys, to see if they'd be willing to do that, so...
I thought John said he was already on board.
Uh, not so sure about that.
Well, we only wanna discuss it, we don't really have any decisions to make, so it's only...
What I'm working on, I just wanted to give a status on that, okay?
I don't mind him talking to us.
Alright. Number two, coming home from church yesterday, we went down Franklin to turn right on a roadblock. Noticed that every tree on that whole side of the road are, the trees are all dead.
Have been for two years.
Is that from the ash beetle?
Yes.
That's that ash, we... And, 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 uh, the ladies brothers don't wanna put any money into it, they just keep it turned down.
We've, we've asked.
We've been trying to get here on it turned down.
Okay, I was just wondering why they're all dead.
No, they've been dead for two years, yeah, unfortunately, they were beautiful. And unfortunately, because they didn't take them down, we're trees are getting that ash.
But that ash board's spreading.
It's spreading.
And is the same thing true with the, uh, the old EJ building that they own on the corner of Franklin and Oak Hill? Are they refusing to repair that building?
Yes, they are.
Yes. And they've been cited numerous times, too.
Good question.
Code has cited them on that numerous times as well.
Alright, good luck getting money out of them tonight.
Well...
Okay, I'm done.
Hopefully we will, we'll take them to court.
A lot of those trees that are in our right of way.
In the village, right, yeah.
Hey, I know the beetle thing is terrible.
It is, it is terrible.
Oh, yeah, you should've seen the, the piece of wood that Brett told you, showed us. Oh, yeah, that was the thing, and you could see the little, the little lines that the beetles are eating.
Yeah. Okay, everybody, is everybody okay?
Uh, we're on, are we on new business now?
Yeah.
Uh...
I think he was saying something.
I, I have an item for new business. Uh, want me to go ahead?
Yeah, I've, I've, I've got just something quick after you're done.
Okay. On your new business, uh, we received a letter from the lawyer, a lawyer for the protest people, I think two or three weeks ago, that spelled out a lawsuit that they were, uh, a pending lawsuit that they were talking about doing against the village over this, this zoning law. And what I found out was, last Monday, there was another letter from that same lawyer, uh, I think it was something to do with the zoning board, uh, uh, I mean, the code office decision, and appealing it, or something to the zoning board, and, uh, it sounded like, from what I was told, it sounded like very official, serious, something business. I have not heard one thing about it, I have not received one piece of paper about it. Uh, can someone tell?
You have more information than we do.
Yeah, no, I, I know what he's talking about. This, this is not a, this is not something that goes to the village board, it's something that goes to the zoning board of appeals, so it's a, it's a, um, appeal of a, uh, of a determination, uh, made regarding zoning, and that, that is an appeal to the zoning board of appeals, and the attorney is, is, um, appealing statements made by the manager in regard to this, this sun- sun yield project allowed use under the zoning code. So, uh, that far, public, and a determination made, um, they didn't get it in on time to coordinate for the, um, uh, June meeting, so that'll come up in the July ZBA. And I'll be sending the zoning board a, uh, an email explaining...
I understand this does not go to the, the village board, they're not the ones to make this decision, but why the hell doesn't the village board know about this? This went to Linda's secretary. Why is this stuff being hidden?
It's not being hidden.
How do you know who sent it, if I don't know?
It went to your secretary, Linda.
No, Tom, I didn't even know who sent it to her. How do you know that? How do you know that?
And it went to, and it went to Bob also. So Bob, I guess I'll ask you, why haven't, hasn't the board known about, this is official busi- uh, biz- village business? Why, this is, this same thing hap-... Let me, let me explain this, this same, same thing happened on the first letter, when it was, uh, talking about suing the village. It didn't even get brought up in that meeting until I opened my computer while the meeting was going on and saw that letter. And Bob, we had the executive session, and you said you were going to provide all this information to the entire board, same information at all times.
Alright, so now you're asking for something different. Now, are you asking for copies of all applications that are going to the zoning and planning boards?
I'm asking for...
Uh, you know, left and right, we've got one at the old Nerchie's place, we've got one on a, on a, um, property up at Watson, we, we've got several applications at the planning and zoning board.
I, the answer to your ques-...
All of those, I can give them to you, but you need to tell me.
The answer to your question is yes, I'm the liaison for the zoning board, the answer is yes, I would like to get all those documents.
Okay.
The village needs to know, the zoning board can't just go off and do this stuff without the village board knowing what they're doing.
I, I mean, i- i- it, it depends how you wanna do it. I- if you wanna be notified of every application that comes in front of the zoning planning board, then we can do that. I mean, I think the letter was sent to, to my... I mean, I think the letter was sent to, to myself and, and the village manager.
And I got with you on it.
Anthony and I have talked about it, I've talked to Joe Griswold about it, it's in process for being reviewed. There'll be a public hearing notice, I've been in touch with the attorney on it. Um, uh, she's asked for a copy of the notice, which I certainly will provide to her. There, there's nothing secretive going on, I mean, there's gonna be a public hearing Ted.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate all that, but the five people, the five, the five people at this meeting tonight don't know about it.
Yeah, I, look, I didn't know, I mean, it, it, it was sent to the mayor's secretary, it was sent to the village manager, this is.
I don't need to know everything, every little thing. We'll find out about it eventually.
No, if this is an appeal of some code office decision, that's only been done twice in the history of Endicott. Linda did it last fall, and this would be the second one, so this is not just little, some little person asking for addition on the end of their building.
Alright, so we'll get copies of that.
Well.
Is there anything else?
I don't wanna, Cheryl, I don't wanna take your word for it, I would like to ask Bob what we will get.
Yeah, I, I'll forward.
He just said he would.
I can forward you the email that I received on it Ted.
And, and I think the rest of the board should get that also.
I'll send it to everyone Ted.
Exactly. Um.
Anthony, go ahead.
Ted, you done?
Thank you Ted.
No, I was just gonna mention the, um, you know, last week we had that accident at Logan Field. Uh, we were talking about, a little bit about it today, so it's something that we'll have to think about going forward, you know, insurance is gonna obviously work on this. But going forward, we wanna think about, you know, should we change the setup of that?
Mm-hmm, we've been talking about that.
At the bottom of that hill, there's a dangerous spot. Um, the guard rail, obviously broke away, so it was pretty easy to, let's think about different barriers there. Maybe we can, you know, just wall that off and move the concession stand somewhere else, um, you know, away from that intersection. So just a couple of things I want everyone to maybe think about over the next, you know, month or so.
Well, we have to, right. And we have to talk about that too, because the insurance will cover for the repairs in the building. But if we wanted to put those, we were talking about concrete barriers up, we have to pay for those ourselves as a village. And, um, also, obviously, right now, we have to come up with a plan and we're working with Delta and the insurance regarding maybe how to reconfigure the concession stand and moving the, um, where they stand to get food maybe off to the side somehow and away from that and maybe have that as a wall.
Keeping in mind all the money we put into the fences.
I, I understand, but that fence will, but the, the guard rail fence in the building didn't stop this woman.
Right.
And she did extensive damage to that building that they probably hopefully can fix with a, with a steel beam going up in there. But that still doesn't, um, prevent this from happening again. And we, even if they move the side, we still have to shore up that area for the kids, cause if they're gonna be standing there or walking by, that's a sidewalk.
The stop is would be over to the right, when the shutters.
Yeah, Cheryl, when we put that fence there and rebuilt that whole area there, um, we left that guard rail there and I would suggest that we put even a much stronger guard rail, because normally there's, when there's a game going on, there's normally ten or fifteen kids buying candy and stuff. And they would've, that would've been a huge tragedy.
Exactly, but Ted, we, we, we looked into that and, um, according to the engineer, a guard rail is not, still not gonna be strong enough. She went through a guard rail fence in a building. What we've talked about is we're gonna have to put some type of concrete barriers up to help stop a car.
No, I ag- I agree. I'm fully in agreement.
You talk about insurance, who's, are we self-insured?
This is gonna be the woman's insurance.
Oh, I know, the woman's, the woman's carrier should.
Yeah.
Here at the front of this, but I didn't know.
So we, we go for travelers. We're travelers for our liability.
Oh, you do, okay. But where's our liability?
No, I mean, we'll, we'll give the information to our insurance company so they can.
They work, they work together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And who's gonna give a quote, who's, who, the street, the, uh?
Yeah, I mean, we did a street talk to, uh, someone at Delta, so they, they were able to come there, you know, and see after the initial accident there.
And who would've, and who would've thought, I mean, how long has that been open? I never thought of a car just barreling down the hill.
So if you need, you need somebody to, uh.
I know.
Make sure they're giving you a fair price.
Yeah.
The, the, um, the other thing is. It's, the good thing is, is that, the good thing is when, um, is that we did have the street department and the village engineer right there on site cause they were at the pool taking care of a, a sewage backup that backed up into the pool. So they were right there, they were the first ones on scene and to make sure that she was okay.
And she was okay?
Yep, she walked right out and said, I'm fine, I'm here, she just, she had a bruise on her, on her elbow, that was it.
Good for her.
She's amazing. Glad to hear that, yeah.
Okay, are we good? No, Anthony has something to say, man.
No, I'm good, that was there.
Oh, okay.
The field there.
Oh, Anthony. I make a motion to adjourn.
No.
Motion adjourned, okay, let's.
All in favor, aye.
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 Everyone.
Check, 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 hello friends, what do you think about that? Um, uh, pretty funny, so, let me just try to clean up this screen here and see if I can, I don't have my light going, so I'm gonna be totally dark. Wait a minute, that's not even, that's not right. Oops. What am I doing? Haha, anyway, so, I don't know what to say, I'm really bad with like live, uh, color commentary. Um, boy, I've completely screwed up my composition here. Where is my fancy background screen? There it is, okay, there's that, so, little bit by little bit, uh, I'm getting it back. And let's see if my camera works, oh, it's so bad. It's so bad. It's so bad, I can never, let me just see if I can clean that up and, uh, we'll see if we can, um, uh, have some interesting commentary here, do you wanna do phone calls? You wanna do, uh, I could set up a, a phone bridge, uh, but let me just do this really quick, I just want to just stand by one second. I just have to see if I can adjust my camera. Without my fancy light, I could turn that one on, let's turn this one on. That'll help a little bit, but it's very warm, it's very orange, yellow. Come on, oh, because I gotta do this, sorry, 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 sorry. So. Uh, always interesting, uh, Endicott Village Board meeting, uh, there is a lot of discussion about the rules for doing public hearings, and by the way, let me say this, okay? I'm gonna, I do have some commentary. Um, so, sometimes, uh, a, a public body will be like voting on a, a specific topic. Um, so there is, I, I mean, like, they might have a, uh, they might have a, that's good, if I, maybe that's okay, if I just pump up the, uh, can I do the gain? Ooh. I gotta do six. Um. How about? Uh, how about we do? That's so funky. Alright, and then pull that down a little bit, ooh, that's getting pretty good, that's getting pretty good. Alright, I think I can deal with that. I think I can deal with that, now can I deal with my own, my own monitor level? My own monitor levels, there we go, okay, so. There we go friends, that was, uh, Endicott Village Board meeting, uh, again, really a strange meeting, so, here's what I, here's what I was gonna say. So let's say they're having a, um, a vote on, um, you know, putting a traffic light up at a certain location, okay? So there is some precedent that they, they can open up a public hearing on that topic. In other words, it's not just a general hearing of the visitors. So, what the VOE is attempting to do, what it sounds like they're attempting to do is, and I think they passed the rules tonight by, you know, you, after a couple of amendments by, uh, Ted Warner. I think they passed these rules that basically you have to register, you have to sign up. There's nothing in op- uh, open meetings law about signing up ahead of time, I don't think this is legal. And the other thing is you have to declare, uh, I, I don't think I fully explained myself, let me make sure that I explain that, that one point fully, okay? Let's go back to that, so, let's say they're having a, a hearing on, uh, putting up a traffic light at a particular intersection. So they can open up public comment on that hearing topic, but it's not just a general, like, open floor. Now, the village or the body, let's say, uh, it doesn't have to have a hearing of the visitors, or they just open, you know, open up the conversation, okay? Uh, they don't have to do that, but if they do, they have to give people free speech. They can't control the subject matter. This is exactly what the Endicott Village Board is trying to do, they're trying to make you register ahead of time, which you have to do by email, which not everybody can do. And you have to register by Friday, and you have to declare ahead of time what you wanna talk about, what are the topics you're gonna talk about? So, haha, what happens if something comes up? What happens if something happens on the weekend? What happens if something happens during the course of the meeting? You know, the prior business of the meeting. So, I don't think that's legal to make people sign up ahead of time, you gotta go through and like Ted Warner was saying, you know, with the people that have dialed in, you can't click and raise your hand. There should, people should be able to, to sign up that night. Just by being on, participating in the Zoom call, you oughta get a chance to take your three minutes, just go through the people that are on the call, bing, 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 bing. You've done it before, you can do it again. And don't limit the subject matter, please, give me my three minutes and don't be telling me what to do with my three minutes, please, because I don't think that's legal. I'm gonna write to the Committee on Open Government and try to get them to rule on this matter, I've been trying, I've been looking through the, uh, you know, they've got some, I don't wanna call it case law, because the C, the Committee on Open, their decisions aren't, uh, aren't binding, but they sort of have, they sort of are, they sort of, because he does this, he used to be Robert Freeman, he's not in anymore, I forget, I don't know who the current guy, the current, uh, guy or gal or, that's in there, I don't know what they're, who's the head of the Committee on Open Government in New York right now. But the point is, you can ask for a ruling and they research the legal topics and it's basically, most judges are gonna agree with the ruling of the Committee on Open Government, whatever they say, the court's probably gonna agree with that, because it's a technical, well-researched decision. So I'm gonna ask the Committee on Open Government to see if it's legal for the village of Endicott, once they open up a hearing of the visitors, they have to, you know, enforce you to stay on one particular topic and the topic it was you declared when you made your request back on Friday. I think that's too, that's, that, it's too much of an encumbrance on my free speech. So, I think that's gotta go. So the other thing is, let's try to remember, there was a lot of discussion on the repealing of this, uh, repealing of this crazy zoning amendment that Linda Jackson keeps calling, uh, adding special restrictions. And it was very interesting tonight, somebody asked her, I think Ted Warner asked her directly, uh, are you wanting this company to still come here? And she said, yes, I, I still want the company to still come here, I just want the DEC to, to handle it. And then Ted went back and he was like, per, I mean, Ted, I really like Ted's line of questioning lately and how firm he is, and Pat too, but especially Ted, Ted, Ted's really the one that's really going after him and, uh, and making, and really staying, I mean, Ted will not budge. He, he really, he stays on a topic until it's, until he, until he's heard. And until, you know, the, the, he, Ted feels the matter is closed, or until he's overruled somehow, some, you know, Ted does back down when the mayor says, listen, we, not now, we'll do it later. Ted, you know, if it's, if it's legal, legal within the framework, Ted, you know, Ted really pushes it to the limit, I really enjoy uh, listening to Ted sometimes on these, on these calls, uh, so, um, so what do we have, so we have, so Ted is calling them out, Ted called them out so directly, it was marvelous. And Ted really explored it a lot further than even I had really figured it out, I didn't know these deadlines. So apparently, there's a twenty day deadline from when you pass a law to when you have to file it with the state, okay? The only thing they're waiting on, which is so stupid, because they had no idea how long, eh, I'm getting ahead of them, I don't, I always do this, I have to slow down, okay? So, there's this protest petition, right? There's a protest petition, it's under village, there's a village, there's a protest petition in, under our own Endicott village law. There's also a protest petition under New York state law, that is the one, it's the state law protest petition that, uh, that the No Burn Broom, uh, group got together and coordinated with their attorney, Claudia Bramer, on this, uh, on this question. So, uh, of, so basically, if you're gonna, if you're gonna change, if you're gonna change the zoning, change the definition of the zoning. In other words, if, if I live next to an industrial area, an industrial zoned, if I'm adjacent, you know, if I'm a property owner and I'm directly adjacent to an industrial, industri- a, a, a property that's zoned industrial in the village of Endicott, and they change the definition of the zoning, they, they, they change what kind of, you know, land uses are permitted there, then if I'm an adjacent property owner, apparently, there's this law, I'd never heard of it before, um, where, uh, if you can get twenty percent of the people surrounding this, this area, uh, to sign a petition uh, within a certain time limit, opposing this zoning change, you can get it, you can, it makes a demand for a super majority vote among the village board when they're approving the thing. They didn't get a super majority vote, they got, they said it passed three to two. All the local media say, oh, it passed three to two, and they don't tell you about this, they, nobody is really mentioning in depth this controversy that's going on right now, okay? So, we're gonna break, we're breaking it down on the Bill Houston podcast like we do, okay? So. If the protest petition, if they find that twenty percent of the people surrounding any property that's zoned industrial in the village of Endicott, that was quite a difficult problem right there, just figuring out what properties those are, you gotta have some people that have some mapping expertise, it was really a, a Herculean task. And I was kind of down on it just because it was, it was a Herculean task and also because there's a much simpler way to get a super majority vote, you, it's like, it's like, uh, do you send out a crew of like, you know, twenty searchers looking for a quarter that you lost down the street? When you, when all you, when you, you put your, your hand in your own pocket and you can pull out a quarter, there's a quarter in your pocket right now, do you really wanna go and do a lot of effort looking for something that you already have? There already is a super majority demand and that is because of the two thirty-nine review, this comes from, I should just look this up, I should know what this is, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, I think it's General GML, uh, Section two thirty-nine dash M subsection five, I think it is, okay? That law says that if the county two thirty-nine review, uh, comes back and if the county, you know, this coordinated review comes back, you know, disfavorably, either disfavor- disfavorably, or it has recommendations for modifications. And if you go against the county, what the county thinks, the two, whatever the two thirty-nine review says, if you go against that, then they're, they're. if you go against that, then there, there again is another demand for an extraordinary vote or a super majority vote. It's a different way of saying super majority is extraordinary vote. And that's also would be four to five. A four to five vote was needed. They only got three to two. So if either of these, if either the protest petition is found to be valid or if the, uh, this other thing that I'm telling you about, right? So Frank Evangelisti, when he wrote this thing, he, he said it was very clever because these very clever politicians always write stuff that's ambiguous. You can interpret it a couple of different ways. Okay? So on one hand, it says the county has not identified any problems with this incinerator. Okay. Which is very bogus. There's technical problems with that 239 review and everybody knows what they are. There was zero coordinating agencies. It was rushed through in two weeks when they normally take a month. And the seeker analysis is supposed to be part, this is on the website for the county requirements for when you make an application. This is something that Frank Evangelisti definitely knows about. When you accept an application for a 239 review, when the county does, it's looking for the seeker analysis to have already been done. It, that didn't happen. So the 239 review is deficient. It's gotta go back and it's gotta be redone. And by the way, the county planning board never even saw it because this thing was decided before, in two weeks before the planning board even met. So we know the planning board didn't even look at this. Okay. This was completely on, you know, done by the staff at the planning, the county planning board, Frank Evangelisti and his staff. Okay. They just wrote this out. Bang, done. Uh, and so on one hand, it says the county doesn't end, it doesn't identify any special problems with this incinerator. And by, and by the way, besides the fact it was rushed through, the, the seeker analysis hadn't been done. You know, there's lots of other technical problems, uh, with it too. Like, um, I just, I forgot the one I was going to tell you. Let me just go on. So there's a page of stuff. There's half a page of recommendations on the 239 review. And it says, so this is what I was saying, right? He, he makes it ambiguous. On one hand, he says, the county hasn't identified any problems and there are lots of problems. And there's technical problems with the 239 review itself. Okay? He says, while the county has not identified any problems uh, with this, with this change of zoning. I mean, here's the other thing. Okay? The 239 review was not a review of the facility. That never happened. That never happened. This is like, I wanna like, I want to play fireworks sound effects, you know, bang, some explosions going off for emphasis. This is like a really big deal. Let's make it a, uh, let's make it a, a text box. Let's make it, uh, this one. Okay? Hold on. So what's the point? The point is that, um, the two, no, 239 review of the facility. Okay? So let's do it like this. There was, so the fade two, is that two? Oh, wrong one. There was no coordinated review of any kind, whether it was under general municipal law, 239 M or L or, you know, when the D E C does a coordinated review, it, it's really an identical sort of review. Only I don't think they call it a G M L 239 review. I think they just do their own D E C version of that. But it's still a coordinated review. No coordinated review was ever done of the facility. And now let's recall the town of Fenton with the bomb truck terminal. Okay? N G Advantage, remember that? So the 239 review in Fenton was super important in the whole chain of events that caused the facility to be nixed and kicked out. Okay. This is what we want to do in Endicott, right? We want to kick, kick the thing out. Maybe let's, let's pay attention to this. Okay? Cause this is what the town of Fenton did. Maybe we should listen to the town of Fenton. Okay? The, the 239 review in the town of Fenton was 37 pages, not two, it was 37 pages. And it, and it, and it had six coordinating agencies, not, not the, not the big whopping zero that we got, that Endicott gets for the zoning change. In other words, there was no 239 review of the facility. The only 239 review we got, uh, was of the zoning change, which is really kind of bogus. Okay? And the 239 review of the facility in Fenton was super critical, super important in the chain of events that caused the facility to be killed. Okay? So here's what happened, right? There's all these different coordinating agencies. Let me name what they are for the town of Fenton. There were six. I bet you I can do it. I bet you I can name the six. Broom County EMS, Emergency Management. Uh, Department of Transportation, Department of Health. There were two adjacent, there was a school district, Shenango Valley. Uh, is it Shenango Valley Central School District, Shenango C V? Maybe it's just C V S D, Shenango Valley School District. Okay? That's another one. Uh, there was, so we have D O T, D O H, EMS, uh, Shenango Valley School District. We had Town of Port Dickinson and there was one more. Uh, which was it? There were six. There were six agencies, including EMS, D O T, D O H, surrounding municipal, you know, adjacent municipalities. And this, uh, did I say the school district? Six. There were six of them. If we did the same thing in Endicott, there's two school districts that are being impacted by this, Seton Catholic and Union Endicott. So there could be up to seven coordinating agencies. We got zero and it wasn't on the facility. Wasn't looking at the facility. It was looking at the zoning change. We didn't get one at all on the facility. Okay? The 239 review in Fenton came back negative to like, nope, nope, nope. We don't like this. We don't like this idea. I believe there were several agencies that wrote negative comments. The one that turned out to really matter was the school district. The school district raised a lot of problems with this thing. And so the 239 review went back to the Planning Commission. And, uh, the Planning Commission, despite the negative, uh, review from the, from the county of this facility, they decided to, and I, once again, I don't, it's been a couple of years. There was, they issued a variance or they declared that it was a trucking terminal or they made some, the zoning board made some kind of a decision, sort of an approval decision. I don't remember technically what it was for the town of Fenton. But the point is the school district in the 239 review, the 239 review is how the school district found out about this facility. And the two, and the school district said, we don't want these, you know, all these trucks, millions of these trucks, you know, interfering with our, you know, transporting our precious children in and out of this facility. David Gill, God bless you, David Gill, man. David, so the planning board decided to go against the 239 review. And two attorneys were hired. One of them is Claudia Bramer, who was hired by a citizens group. Same thing here. Claudia Bramer was hired by a citizens group. In the Fenton case, there was another attorney called Maeve Tour, and she represented the school district. That lawsuit turned into a temporary restraining order, a T R O. It ceased activity. They had to stop their construction activity 100% by order of the court. Uh, and then, um, I think, I forget all that happened. Okay? I think there was a, there was a, there was a, uh, oh, the lawsuit was, there was a lawsuit and it turned into a remand back to the planning board. So it went back to the planning board and by that time, N G Advantage said, they saw the writing on the wall. They said this, I don't, you know, after going through all this. And the town was fired up, just like Endicott is fired up. The town in Fenton was really fired up. So all I'm saying is this 239 review is not a trivial thing. This coordinated review is not a trivial thing and we never got one. You know why? Because the D E C misclassified this as an unlisted seeker action. I know that's where it sounds really technical, you know, a lot of people aren't so, they hear stuff like that and they just say, I cannot understand that. You can understand it. Okay? It's just different, big fancy names. There's three levels of seeker review. Okay? It's the environmental review in New York. The lowest level is called a type two. I don't know why they number them like this. It's just this, it's goofy. Type two is the lowest level. Type one is the highest level and the one in the middle is called unlisted. They always give Endicott the unlisted act, uh, unlisted seeker action. That's the level we always get. It's like, it's like bum, 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 pew, whee. You know, it's like the losing sound from, it's like, you know, the D E C has awarded you a, oh, it's an unlisted seeker action. It's like bum, 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 pew. It's like you lost because you're Endicott and, and you don't matter. So you get the unlisted seeker action. What we should have gotten was a type one seeker action. A type one seeker action comes guaranteed with a 239, well, it's just called a coordinated review with the D E C. A coordinated review is guaranteed with a type one seeker action. By the way, a type one seeker action is, uh, is necessary in this case because, uh, prior to May, uh, May 7th, uh, 2020, an incinerator was not a permitted land use within the Village of Endicott in any zone. Let me say that again. Prior to May 7th, 2020, an incinerator was not a permitted land use in the Village of Endicott anywhere. An incinerator was permitted, was, I'm sorry, prohibited prior to May 7th. Incinerators were prohibited. Do you get that? Incinerators were prohibited by zoning. They had to change the zoning and they botched it. They botched it. They were so in a hurry to try to deceive us of what this thing really, really was. And they kept on calling it a recycling facility. Guess what? Claudia Bramer, the amazing Claudia Bramer pulls, pulls that. She's like, uh-uh, I ain't buying it. She says, she, so she said, number one, that vote was bogus. Okay? So basically she said this, an incinerator, she said it just in almost that same plain language. She said, first of all, an incinerator is not legal right now in Endicott, under Endicott Village Code. Okay? So we all need to agree upon that. An incinerator is not permitted right now. And then she said, even after you pass this law, you know, permitting and, or you claim to have passed the law. We just talked about before how that was controversial because of, there's actually two requirements for, I want to make two, I want to make sure you see the two. There's two requirements for a super majority vote. They are only talking about one tonight. They're going to get a reminder tomorrow morning uh, about the other requirement for a super majority vote. Okay? They're not going to roll over this. We're going to have a discussion about that half a page of comments uh, that Frank Evangelisti gave on that 239 review that were ignored. Those were in the spirit of the law, those were recommendations for modifications and they were ignored. That triggers a super majority vote under general municipal law, section 239 M subsection five. We're not playing around. We're not playing around. We're not playing around. We're just not. So I just want to say once again, God bless everybody in No Burn Broom, everybody in concerned citizens of Endicott. Anybody that's working like on this thing that without even under the rubric of any particular group. Oh, there's another group, a where, what's it called? Air Water, A W A, Air Water and we, and A W A, I should, wait a minute. I'll show you it. I have one to show you. It's pretty cool. My friend Terry, uh, I think designed it. Somebody else helped. Does somebody else want to? Do I want to say who the somebody else was, Terry? I don't know. I'm just going to say Terry for now. Where is it? Come on. I know. That's, that one's naughty. Okay. Somebody is posting mean pictures of village officials and I don't want to get involved in that. Okay? So Air Water and Residents of Endicott. Let's see if you can see this. Okay? I want you to see this. It's pretty cool. I want you. Come on. All right. Let's see. Does this work? No. It gets really crappy. It's really crap. It takes a long time to fiddle with the camera to get all the settings exactly right. So it's, it's a picture of a river. And it's, it's kind of like, it's kind of, um, it's got like a white cast to the picture. It's like it's faded. It's not really sharp contrast. And then there's a where that's written in kind of ghost letters where the, the, the body of the letter is blank, but the shadow is still there, the shadow of like the sides of the letters. So it's kind of a cool look. It's a where with a heart over it, kind of floating over the river. It's just a typical river shot like around here. You know, I don't know the spot, but it's very likely from around here. Looks just like the Susquehanna. And it says, Air Water and Residents of Endicott, A W A R E. So all I'm saying is God bless every one of you that is working, stewing something, making a phone call, calling Donna Lupardo, calling the D E C, calling the governor, you know, calling Fred Akshar, calling Jason Garner, uh, calling the Empire State Development Corporation, calling, calling, you're calling everybody and it's all good and it's working. It's working. What you're doing is working. You, but I'm not saying it's working to get you to like slow down and to stop. I'm saying pour it on. We are kicking their ass. We really are. We really are. I have been involved, I don't know how many environmental permits or whatever. Most of you have gotten involved in. For me, it's been quite a few. I suspect a lot of people, this is your first one. I've been involved in a lot and I'm telling you, we are in really good shape. It was amazing watching Pat. I mean, not, yeah. Um, Ted Warner tonight, listening to Ted, I mean, not watching him, he was on the phone. But the way he was pressing her on the fact that we think you're trying to pull a fast one. You're going to do this thing where, you know, we, we can't get the, uh, the, the seeker and going before the planning board and the public hearing, we can't all this, get all this stuff done for like, you know, into, into mid-July. And meanwhile, we're going to get a decision on the, this protest petition from the engineering firm that was hired. We're going to get a, we're going to get a decision from them pretty soon, like in a week maybe. And by the way, it ain't looking good if, if you, if you, if you make us, make the, the community group have a cutoff date of May 7th. It, that's what Ted Warner says. I had no idea. That's what I suspected. It's a really hard thing to do. But Ted said that there, uh, that if there's a, if you, if you required that the petitions be cut off at May 7th, it's not, it's not looking likely. So what Ted's saying is, is that the setup is, Ted's even called it a very clever scheme. He called it a scheme to defraud and mislead the people of Endicott. It was amazing. Good job, Ted Warner, man. Good job, Ted Warner. Kudos. Kudos and hats off, tip of the hat, everything. Great honor and respect to Ted Warner for what an amazing performance tonight. And for really standing up to the people and, uh, and we need that because this crew that's in there now is really trying to, I couldn't believe the three ladies voted not to have a public hearing tonight. Including, uh, including, who was it? Probably Ted. I never remember who says what, but, uh, somebody said, wait, you're, uh, do you really want to think about this? do you really want to think about this? Cheryl Chapman, I mean, you're going to be running for, you're running, you're up for reelection? You're running for office and you're voting not to listen to the people? You're voting not to have a public hearing? Is that right? That was great. There was a lot of great moments on this, on this, in this public hearing tonight. So anyway, kind of, that's, I'm kind of a, I'm kind of all talked out. Let me check the chat and see what people are yakking about and see if, maybe if I'm talking to myself. Two concurrent viewers. Uh, prop, proper propaganda. Oh, we got Ed. So John, John Solak, yeah. World's greatest non-deliberative body. That's a great comment. Ed, Ed Z2, they get paid to do nothing. I wouldn't say that. I don't think they get paid to do nothing. This is a pop, prop, prop urganda. This is a podcast? Yah, yah. Am I the only gay in this village? I, I don't know. I don't know about that. I, I wouldn't think so. This is a podcast? Well, not exactly in terms of having the syndication and making the audio version and putting, putting it up on these podcast platforms. Not really. It's just, it's just kind of a brand name. So sorry about that. Propurganda, propaganda. It's just nothing but propaganda. You gotta say it with a southern accent for it to sound right. Propurganda, propaganda. This, this ain't nothing but a bunch of propaganda. Okay, I'm gonna, I think I'm going to sign off, friends, for the night. And, uh, that's it. Thanks for tuning in. And of course, you know, please subscribe if you can to the Bill Houston podcast. It really helps. It turns on features, uh, helps me build my channel. Give the video a like, a thumbs up, please. And if you feel like donating, I always appreciate donations in any amount. And my PayPal is tinyurl.com/donate2billhouston. And if you want to send me something by mail, preferably a check or a money order, William Huston, P O Box 22, Endicott, New York, 13761. Okay, friends, gonna talk to you next time. You want to write me, williamahuston@gmail.com. Did I say that? Okay, friends, nighty night. Bye-bye.